This is
I have been exorcising. Playing game anyway.
You'll take me off for it?
Well, I'm getting discouraged. Don't get started in the matter.
At some point.
It's in your book. Yes. Okay.
You made a lot of problems.
Hey, Mayor.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't trust anyone. Of course, you're very good at that.
You're very good at that. It's the same in the back.
I'll make sure I get some strength. Did you send your text?
That's best.
Um. I mean, I don't think. Well, we already had this. I.
And then somebody else.
Any tweets before you try?
That guy was hysterical.
Yeah.
I forget that actor's name.
It's Lee something.
Shoot, I might be thinking of Daniel Potter from that. They're not similar to me.
Leave something. I'm talking about him as a film hero.
Talk about being typecast. It's supposed to seem like every movie. Did you get some food out of it?
Yes.
Oh, thanks.
Jack, you go.
Hey, sir. Can you turn it up, sir?
Man, I mean, everything down there.
I see my place.
Okay.
What do I have today?
You know who? Better than you.
Well, he would have.
There's like thirty. They have kids. There's a neighbor. The child.
That's scary.
Hey, you're like.
This is how you do it. I used to have a story that she called that.
Say it in that.
That's a cuber. Um, it's actually working right here. It's just a day long that it's running late. It's on its side. We talked to. You talking to.
That's not a sale.
You're ready. We look to the world.
We need it. And you know, she paid that term back on. And we told her, we said, we know that. It's gonna be hard. And she should have known.
Go back.
Okay.
So, I mean. I mean, that's. Offered a little sort of. The meters actually. She's having trouble with his name.
What do I get the money, man?
Not more. I can't.
Yeah, but it's just.
You can do some personal. You got restrictions. They're all these. I don't know. Back in.
It looks as well as. Although I have these bugs where it's so.
She could have done that at six.
And I tell you, that's where. Same way. Last night, this is right when I was like, what you trying to make with that? You know, I've never seen that on lady.
You got a one wrong.
What you gonna do? What you gonna do? Cause I mean, like. It doesn't happen often, but you know. Sometimes I'll go here on the. I know I'm not. But I'm. It's like. I drive.
She must be using that.
I'm hiding. I'm hiding dangerous.
I mean, you don't say that. That's it. I mean, that's. Sam's just listening. If you do what? Kind of part of it. We didn't get since. I know I haven't said it. Very shallow by the way.
I did say it times.
Okay, literally, that's all I'm just thinking about.
My ways talking.
That's how long it's been. How long does that be? I'm sorry, buddy, though.
I think six months.
Yeah. That's how long it's been going. We have. If y'all want, if y'all tell me to go. I'll give you exactly.
We're in. Yeah. Um, we're in the block.
Yeah, well, actually.
Oh, really?
You say okay. But we don't.
Yeah, that's how. We just.
They said, we need that. Somebody on the.
She's talking about in the morning. Yeah, there's not. I'm actually so long. We're coming.
I believe you all.
Okay.
I understand it. Everything's big ass.
I thought about, yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
So this way.
I thought. Maybe I'll say now. Control the money.
What's happening, man?
Um.
She's been saying.
There. Every day. It's never doing.
Do you know? I've seen it. It's a. It's a.
He's like, I don't mind.
I can't.
Yeah.
The team.
We, we. Coming and it's a point.
What's in there? They told me Sunday they were coming.
Surviving. Well, myself, service. Definitely. Yeah. I still. For a few years.
I believe it will.
I'm betting.
Well, screw it up. They have an interesting. Or. Something with the soil.
Yeah.
That's.
Well, yeah. So I went on the.
Here, but I'm still.
He had been church. That's why I did this.
He has volunteered to assist.
But I have.
I got.
Well, I'm moving there. Cause we're like, there.
Sure.
Is where they belong to.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Yeah, read.
I know the. The. Is that. Your social.
I think it's coming from.
No, right.
Uh-uh. Okay. I almost.
They're saying. Have some.
Okay, so.
All right. Bye bye.
I wonder how looking at that most.
Yeah, I guess. The first. The dead ones aren't that. One of us.
Um.
Sure.
Not. It's.
It's really sticky.
But what? I mean, there's no. Let's see. It's five. We're having a place. I'm just. He's just.
I know. Say it.
I don't work. Take it away. I like. Very long times. Times you just. Tell you. I do. Really long.
As the.
Why didn't you put your. This guy now? They keep. It's always. They should.
We listen to you. That's your. Week.
Everybody.
Kind of like.
He takes with the law.
I'm sorry. This is. Sort of. That one's I like.
Yes.
Nice. It's all the way. Like my junior. Moving his manufacturing.
Recreation out there. They're. Have me. Next things. And we just. We're all dressed around and play. Probably play games. Just trying to be better than these.
Third parties.
About.
My Batman.
Where you play. We play.
You know, so based on.
Solutions.
And for me, ever, ever. I didn't know. To default.
I wish I had a commercial demand.
But everybody knows that. That. Or a little. Some of them. You don't feel bad. And everyone's saying.
I see. Is that your job?
Never get any better upset or anything. I get bad at myself.
That one does the agenda.
So small.
Thanks. And they're not. And more of the other people. She's.
I think.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. You know. Yes. We are. Yes, sir.
All right. Me. Hold us. You can boom. You have the invocation.
Dear Father, thank you, Lord, for this day. Thank you, dear Lord, for welcoming us up this morning and starting us on our way with the reasonable portion of our life. Helpful strength. Father God, I ask you to be with us in this meeting. Help us as we go about the business of the town of South City.
Yes.
Lord. Be with us as we make these decisions that are for the good of the people. Uh, for the town. And for our employees.
Yes.
Lord, these and other blessings I ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Let's join. Blessed and believed. Blessed and believed. Of the United States of America. In Jesus' word. For which you say. What? Under God. In this. It's. So far off.
Let's see. Love that.
Uh, in some way. Get the next statement written by. In some way. I'm sure. Right. There's some.
Words to advance a framework for our success, to balance government. Dynamite partnership and engaged community.
Mission. Uh, Patterson, if you would.
From the exciting process and vibrant community where diversity, innovation, and education drives success in the global league. And friendly society.
I guess. Uh, new business. Do. One, personnel discussion. For six years. Twenty four, twenty five budget. You have, of course.
All right. Thank you, Mary. Um, so you should have a couple packets available to you tonight. Um, small packets, what we're going to talk about first. Um, listen with them. So then, Randall, on top of it, it should be identical because he's brought your. Your group more package back from the last meeting, but if you. Uh, if you don't have any materials, let us know when you start. Everybody should have a copy of this or or what's in your pack. The previous package and green package. Um, the, the first item in regards to personnel discussion is presenting the class and compensation study. For the twenty four, twenty five this year. Um, as we do annually, we look at. All full time positions throughout the organization. Uh, we don't break it up into departments or categories. We look at the whole organization. And it's going to affect some departments more than others because it's entirely based on what's going on in the job market. Some positions continuously seem to move every year. They face the market conditions like police officers. And some followings trends that we're seeing that we catch up to. Our defensive position moves once every few years. Uh, this year, we continue to see movement again in the police department. Uh, and we draw a little movement in parks and rec and public works and utilities. Uh, it totaled across all funds seventy thousand, one hundred and twenty five dollars and ninety nine cents. Uh, this is a, uh, a recap from what we talked about with compensation studies before. This in no way is a reflection of any individual employee's performance. But that's actually nothing to do with any individual employee. This is a market analysis of studying the value of the positions. And it's on what surrounding towns are paying and also reps comparable sized towns throughout the state of North Carolina are paying to help come up with these numbers. To make sure that we're competitive from a recruitment and retention standpoint. Uh, we look, if we look at other factors when we're trying to make determinations about. Um, an individual player's pay. So whether we think that person deserves a raise based on performance or cost of living, that's an entirely separate analysis. So the individual is proposed or positions proposed to get an increase from the compensation study. That is reflecting the fact that the market is telling us that the minimum salary that we're advertising. Is not up to par and needs to be adjusted to be able to effectively improve and get applicants. Uh, if we don't make these adjustments, um, we're not going to be competitive in the good life and we're not getting access for these positions. And, and we're already facing that now. For individuals like treatment plan operators and police officers particularly. Where we're just not getting applicants. Um, I can't tell you, that's not going to stop. This is something that we're facing when the economy is doing really well, we're going. A real hometown without an economic recession. This is the challenge for government is salaries just keep moving up and, and we have to go through that, uh, that process to. To try and stay competitive with the markets. Um. We did propose the compensation study back in January. We're bringing it back. Now, the, that was tabled at that time to be brought up now for the. Um, even during that period of time, there were adjustments made to this because there was been movement even in that period of time with police officers. Um, just, just, just a few, few quick examples. Um, Randall and Chatham County Sheriff's Office have both adopted compensation studies. Um, since January. Um, we're starting, uh, starting, uh, sheriff's office employees at fifty three, eight hundred. For police officer. Um, Pittsburgh's range of fifty two to fifty seven. And offering incentives that we're not offering. Uh, Randall is even at fifty two and offers incentives like Christmas bonuses and as a base, as a percentage of their salary on top of what we're able to offer. So that's, that's a factor of why that has moved so aggressively. Uh, that particular position. Um, treatment plan operators have become very difficult to find. Um, and it's one of many factors why the state and federal government put pressures on water and sewer systems to regionalize is. The increased competitiveness of finding people to do those jobs. And the added challenge of finding certified people to pass the, the examinations that go with these positions. That's, that's a big part of the factor in that. Uh, you'll also see an adjustment to our street maintenance workers. Um, so this is, you'll see where they. Uh, so we use the same title for those who do street maintenance in terms of things like picking up the grounds and cutting grass. Those sorts of things, picking up leaves. We also have street maintenance workers who do, uh, operations for utility cuts and repairs. Uh, for our water and sewer maintenance side. So they're all street maintenance workers and, and that's reflected in the. As well. Um, so are the, if you'll see on the third page of your path here. Which will be this page, you can see a breakdown of each position. That the compensation study, uh, was in a fairly changed too.
Can I answer a couple of questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so. With the street maintenance supervisor on thirty one to thirty three. How much does thirty three, um? Basically, what, what is that? Cause they are based on that out.
They're, they're, they're full time salary.
Who's out?
But we, we have part time people that are out.
Okay.
All our full time people are, are salaried.
I'm sorry. That's. That's, that's, that's. A very hard amount to. Do a lot of that. I mean, if one person's coming in. And we're making thirty three thousand dollars and having to take care of a family. Um, that's, that's not a lot of money.
No, it's not.
So, three check. Ladies.
It's six.
Cost increases.
I'm sorry?
Who decided the cost increases?
The cost increases? Meaning what, what, which?
So you would.
It's entirely based off an analysis of what other communities are doing. Like that, that taking out. We look at what other, other municipalities accounted for. All the positions. What, what anybody there for?
Yes.
It's not at all that it'd be an analysis to say this is all we think this person for.
Oh, I'm kind of. Uh, but you know, we, we talk about being advocates for people. Um, I'm in the same. Thirty thirty three thousand, five hundred and eighty three dollars is not adequate salary for someone like that. I, I think it should be. And. Parts and rectorates. Why is he the lowest paid director? Or is?
Yeah. That's just right. It is.
What is that reason? Is, is that comparable to everyone around? Because I know the people that were here before him were making more money.
I, I don't believe that's parts of record or they're making more money. I believe we, we, we didn't.
Who was the guy before the last?
Joseph Kill?
Yes.
I'm sure what Joseph Kill made, but.
But was he not in parts and rector?
He was.
He was making more. So. If we want to keep a good parts and re- director. I suggest we pay them more. I suggest we pay the street workers more. The police officer more. And, uh, treatment plant operators more. If we don't do anything else, that's my suggestion.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um. I mean. Sanford taking. And the discussions we've had about that. Why are we addressing salaries and thirty five? Why aren't we just not letting Sanford set those? A mouse?
Well. We're, we're, we're being consistent. We settled every position and, and this is what it came out to. We didn't try to cherry pick out. Uh, some positions and only look, you know, we try to look at everything every year. I guess it's always possible we run into snappus and. And we can't, the boys don't get turned over to July one. And I mean, you want this adopted. It's, it's, it's early March. So I, I think we got a few months to nail all that down.
Well, I was just curious, because all of the discussions have been the opposite of what you're saying. And, uh, discussing Sanford talking in the ring. And, and Sanford, uh, selling salaries and paying the salaries. So. That's what I'm confused is to run. They're in there.
I'm, I'm, well, I guess I'm baking in a contingency that just in case we have delays that we're prepared.
Well, if, if we were to. Um, like, let's just take the, um, treatment plant operator. If we were to say give them more than what the suggested amount is. Um, when Sanford picks them up, will they look at that amount and, and, and try to match that or what?
From everything they have said and what they have done when it comes to absorbing Pittsburgh's employees. Uh, every employee's been getting a raise above what they were making. And I would expect that, I would expect the individual employees to be all compensated by Sanford above even what the new minimum is. Uh. Proposed here tonight for the treatment plan operator. Uh, that's my expectation.
Are the street maintenance workers going to stay? Who are most of them?
Some will and some won't.
Okay.
Those are the ones that do work in the utilities side doing the repairs for guys.
What about these? Are these, is this just a?
It's some.
Example?
It's some of those because you'll see the street maintenance worker. Where you said the department call, some say five sixty and some say eight twenty eight. The ones that say over twenty eight would go. The ones that say five sixty would stay.
Yes.
I have another question. Um. I don't understand the. For the. That's the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven column. Because they're. Minimum listed in the eighth column. Is still within the grade range of the previous grade. And quite frankly, close to the minimum. With plenty of room up to the maximum. I don't understand the need for the change in grade.
I'm, I'm trying to make sure I understand.
Okay. Let me get to the key example. Um. Maintenance worker. Ten thousand, not going to do anything over thirty five. Current grade one. The purpose increase to grade two. Minimum. So thirty three thousand, five hundred and thirty three dollars. Cost increase. On five nine nine. But if you look at. The grades from twenty twenty three. And you look at a one. The minimum is thirty one, nine eighty four, which is what you're currently making. The name is forty one. Five, seven, nine, which is way more than thirty three. And the max is fifty one, one seventy four. If, if our max is, you know, eighteen thousand dollars more. Than what we're budgeting, why, what's the need for the increase in the grade?
Yes. When you, when you're trying to advertise for these positions. Uh, it's, I think it's imperative that, that minimum number reflects the appropriate grade. Because that's the most important factor when it comes to the salary that a prospective applicant is looking at.
I don't, I don't understand. I mean, if we're advertising, why don't we just say thirty nine? That's in the range. I mean, I don't.
That, if you're looking at that, understand what you're saying. You're saying that thirty seven, oh, two, five is just below thirty seven, two, nine, right?
You're looking at thirty seven, oh, two, five.
Under the grade three and say.
Street maintenance. Ten. You can, you can look at the three. But I was specifically looking at the one to two, but three to four is the same analysis, though. Three to four. That's still threes. Thirty seven, two, nine is still. I, I don't within the three. Grade range.
I think if that was effective, I think we wouldn't have any problem finding police officers. And I think when you're advertising. Agencies are trying to bump that minimum, but I'm.
Advertise, do we advertise the minimum? Or is we advertising? A middle range or what?
We normally advertise at least to the midpoint. But, but I'm telling you, the, what people look at, that's, it's baked into the culture of government that when you advertise a range. There's an expectation as much as possible, especially with lower positions. That the offer is going to be at the minimum unless there's a justification to go above that. And if, if you offer less than that. Your, your candidate pool is going to bundle down. I understand what you're saying. That if it's in the range, you can still hire it. But they have to apply to that bar. And I, I think it has a very negative impact on your applicant pool. I mean, we're experiencing that now.
Well, let me, let me ask this question. Can you give the exact number of people going to Sanford? That you. Okay, what would that, how many would that be?
We have a spreadsheet on that. I think it's twenty-eight on the sheet, but there's three that were highlighted as a state, except for it.
That's right. There's three that are collecting water payments and they're super, the two collecting water payments and their supervisor stays. So that would be twenty-five.
Do you know a ballpark bigger of what your salaries are?
I didn't calculate the salaries, but I can go add it up.
No, no, I'm just putting them in the ballpark. Well, let's just say they are, uh, collecting power.
I mean, it's gonna be a million.
Yeah, it's a, it's a number to work with. We got twenty-eight people leaving. We're paying, uh, uh, twenty-five, twenty-five people leaving. That we no longer have to do anything for. So that frees up that money to do other, what's under that because it's all in the thirty-five.
Rules, yeah, gross fund.
Well, e- e- either way you look at it, there, there's still got to be a savings there without paying vacation. Is that coming out of there?
It's all, it's all in that.
So. Revenue on that.
The only thing that would be different in, in accelerating the process with Sanford to July would be that personnel costs would basically shift to like a contracted service. Where you're paying, you're paying Sanford basically to pay our former people while the merger's finalized.
Then why would we want to pay Sanford more? Why don't we pay them at this ground level at where they are, that Sanford take care of the increase if it's going to cost us anyway?
Well, you're gonna pay what Sanford's gonna bill you, is what I'm saying. I mean, Sanford's gonna, gonna tell you.
And this is a moot point then, to go over their salaries, because you just said, Sanford, we're gonna pay Sanford what they bill us, not what they're making. Right?
I, I, I can't tell you with certainty what Sanford's gonna pay an individual employee, and I have to have that information to answer that question. All I'm saying is, we study all the positions, and having it graded here and approved by the board, I think is a backstop for, just in case there's a delay in them taking employees July first.
Well, it will be, that's not gonna hurt anybody because you're still making the same amount. You, you can't, this is what you didn't never had. So if everybody's salary is going to separate, remain the same until that merger actually take place, what would be the problem with that?
The challenge with recruitment and retention of who's already there.
They're going to need here, they're going to Sanford.
Well, for the period of time where you're trying to work that out, is what I'm trying to.
If they don't get a raise.
Well, they wouldn't get a raise before toward July one with this.
So, that's the question here.
I, I mean, I can't answer. That's definitely, every different, employees can have, they're not gonna weigh in on.
Has anybody? Has anybody talked to Sanford to get their input on those figures?
That's what been offered.
Has anybody talked to Sanford to get their input on these figures?
No, no.
Well, they're taking over, they're gonna set the rate. Um, at least for things in thirty fund, I'm inclined to, yeah, let that, let that mature a little bit, and let those grapes sit on the vine. Until, and then I'm talking to Sanford, um, and get a feel for where their heads are on it. And, uh, maybe we'll visit things in the thirty fund later. But that's where I, personally where I would be in the thirty fund. Uh, since we are merging.
If, if, what I feel is like talking about thirty funds, salaries is pretty mature. And we can certainly bring that back when we don't work. It's, it's very early on.
It is, and I do think talking to Sanford, uh, we had, for, uh, thank you for, that's great, man, it was there, myself and the man. Chris and, and, and Rank and, and their representatives, and, uh, they did a continued efforts for that goodwill. Maybe we should talk to Sanford. All issues related to thirty fund, is my position.
Louis, if I may, the thirty fund additional increases are only eleven thousand two hundred dollars.
Right.
That's, that's the totality there.
Well, it's not, it's not the amount, I mean, it's the issue of, uh, who's taking over? Are we gonna be good neighbors? Are we gonna work in good faith with Sanford? And they may say, I don't care what you do. Then they say, you know, we think it's too low, we think it's too high, but we don't know because no one's asked. Instead of, we're gonna work in good faith, I think we at least need to make the call.
Well, let, let me ask this question. Then during the, if, if we don't act on the thirty five employees, and during the time for the merger's completed, but we're in this kind of employer to contractual situation, and they give our former employees at that point an increase in pay, and we're having pay for it. What's the plan for budgeting for that?
Well, I mean, it's a fortune, but I don't buy it.
But it wouldn't be if they after July one. That's when they take employees.
They'll have them after July one. But you, you're hypothetical. They let us know.
They have them at our cost though.
What?
They have them at our cost because we have revenues.
But what you just said indicated that Sanford's gonna let us know it's too low prior to notification of budget, so we should be able to factor it in.
I can ask, I, I can't.
Well, that's all I'm saying is.
I can ask.
We're, we're, we're projecting something for an economic partner and haven't spoken with that economic partner. That's my thoughts. I mean, I think we should. I said, I think we should. The thirty fund, I'm not sure, that's my, I'm one out of seven, but that's my opinion.
Can I ask another question? How many street maintenance workers are going to stay in Cyrus?
They should all be accounted for on the spreadsheet.
It's like three. It's like three.
There's four street maintenance workers that was approved in last year's budget, plus the street maintenance supervisor.
Okay.
So, correct? So there's five people that will be staying here. So, let, let me try to answer something back to your question. If you look at administrative support specialists on that first line, and you see grade three and thirty-seven oh two five ten. Okay, so. And if you look two pages over at three, the minimum salary for three is thirty-five two sixty-two. The difference is five percent, and this is her actual salary, because she was hired at thirty-five two sixty-two, but she took her Spanish assessment, so she got the five percent incentive, which brought her salary up to thirty-seven oh two five. If we had hired someone that was not filing, then they would be at the thirty-five.
Yeah, I don't know. Um, it's not questions regarding, I don't know why it'd be adjusted. But I do have another question that relates to the two public works positions. Do we have any desire originally to freeze, uh, hires in the public works position until we can get a handle on where the department is going, and we can discuss the future of that department and the future structure and, and have a discussion on what's best. So, um, I know our public work directors left, the, the admin position, is that a new hire or are they, are they already in there?
That's, that was, that's an existing position.
Is anybody, I know it's an existing position, but is anybody in that position?
Yes.
Okay.
Basically, if you remember, it, it was bought to us at thirty-two thousand, I do believe, if I remember correctly. And it was the desire to move one person out of one department to create that in the guise of helping Cal with his workload. And so they are, and they were already here.
Under Cal, okay.
And so they could just shuffle around a little bit, and, and that's how we ended up with this administrator special. No, it didn't exist. We created, we created in order to help Cal out.
Well, I, I like to, personally, I like to keep consistent with our express wishes. I'd like to remove the public works line item for any consideration. That would be my thought. Because I, I still have a lot of questions about what's gonna be left in the department, where it's going. If we are looking at, uh, any type of outsourcing, and at one point there was a discussion about a leaf truck to decrease the number of employees that are currently have to engage in pickup. We don't go down the line, we're just gonna use money from the proposed stormwater program. So I've still just got questions about how all that's gonna operate moving forward.
I, I don't really see how anything changes. I think you pull, because it's already segregated. So, you, the thirty fun employees go to Sanford, the ten fun employees keep doing what they're already doing.
Fun employees as well.
No.
Yeah, we were talking about, you said about eleven would be going. Uh, it was, it was in, it was on Cal's side.
Okay, oh, okay, I, I see what you're saying. Because, because it's a combination of all the public utilities positions, and then part of public works goes, and that's the part that specifically deals with water and sewer.
Right, but it's all.
Like I was just saying.
If they're kind of sad and they wonder his part, then, you know, and this is a question Curtis raised when the department has a question is gonna come up again, is if there is less to supervise, what, what does that look like for a public works director perspective? If there's less to supervise, is that salary drop? Does those job requirements drop? Does the job description change? We haven't discussed any of that. So, I'm just saying, I don't know, because this department is in flux. Most of the new department I've ever seen in the past eleven years.
Yeah.
I just don't know what's gonna be left.
I, I, I think we're overcomplicating it. I really do. I don't think it's really that hard. Because you're left with your street maintenance guys, you're left with your fleet mechanics, you're left with your general services, which deals with, um, you know, your building maintenance, your custody. Um, I mean, it's, you still have your power buildings, you still have your, your equipment operators, they're still doing your boom truck pickup, you're still doing leaf pickup. I, I think what it does is it opens yourself up to figure out where some more focus areas like stormwater. But stormwater is not something we do now. So if you add stormwater as a service, then you're picking up a function replacing the water and sewer piece.
That is a good question. If, if you do pursue with the stormwater, um, where is that really gonna go? Is that gonna go ten or thirty fun? Is that, we have ten entirely separate fund?
I, I, I would probably set it up as a separate fund, but it would be, but I would treat it just like you would, um, to a maintenance folks now with the thirty fun. It's part of public works, but it's the, but it's the cost allocation is separate.
If we're treating it like a thirty fun, is that going to go to Sanford as well?
No, 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 no. I'm not saying that. I'm saying you set it up like an enterprise fund, not like water and sewer.
Have, 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 uh, the Sanford man that were contemplating a, a, uh, storm, stormwater fund?
I think we mentioned it to him, but I don't, I don't think it has any, any bearing on them. I mean, we're not talking about contracting with stormwater.
No, but it could, it could, it could play with some of the town with the flooding and necessary repairs and, and, um, you know, they may have a, they may think that's a good idea, they may encourage that, or they, you know, they may have no position.
Well, I, I think from a stormwater perspective, what we talked about last year, with the stormwater maintenance program, which is, that's serving the stormwater fee, that allows to buy a leaf truck and through leaf collections, we freed up guys to do other sound improvements. And, and that would entirely, what else could be done? It would entirely depend on the amount of revenue collected by the fee.
We were just talking about a leaf truck. We, we also talked about capital improvements that we can make because of stormwater. And, and we had a nice presentation on, uh, um, some of the underground, I call them buffers, but the underground walls, shavers that can be constructed in appropriate thirty funds, uh, stormwater.
That's what, I, I agree with you. All, all I'm saying is, how much of those capital projects you could do would just be entirely based on what, what your revenue is in your fee to be able to fund those projects in addition to leaves. I just thought leaves were the, 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 the epicenter of the starting the program, and then you're doing other projects with the remaining funds every year. Just the, the, the secondary benefit was just the freedom of employees to be able to address other issues because you have a one-man operation for leaves from then on. The other benefit was, because, because I, I, I've taken advantage of this in other municipalities I worked in, um, you have the ability to get at least twelve months out of the year. Not just during the seasons that you got a truck, a truck fitted to be able to get the leaves. You get, you're able to get away from, um, having to bag leaves and you can just suck them up all year long. So it's just to improve quality of service that people can, can see.
And that's something we're gonna look at as we have less employees. My two cents though, I would still like to have a discussion. And maybe this is a, me all in itself, I don't know, but I'd like to have a discussion of where this department is going. Look at a, a flow chart, uh, top to bottom. Um, I'd like to get back to Curtis's suggestion two years ago and see if now is an appropriate time to outsource it. And we don't know until we crunch the numbers. Uh, at that point in time, I think Curtis was talking about outsourcing leaves and the money of the cemetery.
And then some repairs on roads, you know, like the auto or something.
So, uh, yeah, because our. We did talk about that. So I'd just like to, if, if there was ever a time to revisit the structure of a department, it, it's time on this.
I, I understand, yeah. When you're making a change and you don't have a director, I mean, I understand it.
I know, because I'm not saying we're a director permanently, I'm just saying, like, let's get a plan in place before we just rush ahead. That's my thought.
Oh, I have another question. Um, if you read it correctly, with the street maintenance worker, uh, getting, uh, maybe about you know, the ten percent raise, thirty-three five eighty-three, is that right? I can't say very good.
Thirty-three five eighty-three, yes.
If I, if I computed it correctly, that boils down to about sixteen dollars an hour.
Which one? That shows about right.
Well, I don't think that's enough. Um, because they get out here when it's cold, when it's raining, when it's snowing, when it's hot. And they could easily go somewhere here and then in the cool and then the warmth in the times and make a lot more money. So I think if we want to be competitive, we need to keep our blue collar workers.
I agree.
So, I, I'm not, I'm not arguing you with you that. I just think, and I, I'm just throwing it out to the ball. I don't think that's enough money for our street maintenance workers.
I don't either, but at the same time, uh, the, we, we haven't gotten to where we're trying to get to, because again, we got a lot of unknowns. Once we figure out who's leaving and who's staying, then you'll better have a better handle on where the increases will be. And, and I definitely agree that we do need to increase those blue collar workers, but right now with what we got, the best you could talk about really is the police department and the fire department, because then you actually know.
They're gonna be here.
Yeah, they're gonna be here.
I just wanted.
Everybody else is kinda in a limbo too, eighty-three, not everybody, but quite a minimal.
I just wanted, yeah, everybody to be thinking about that, you know, and because when it comes time, I want that to be, I think, I think something that we should really, really consider heartily. And also with the parts and rector director, um, I think that sixty-nine eight sixteen, for all that he does, is not enough money. Something for, I'm throwing out for y'all to look at. He does a lot. Um, he's the lowest paid director in the whole city, and he does have a lot of responsibilities and plans a lot. That's just something I'm throwing out there for everyone to think.
And, and I agree, because it makes the comp study really look funny. When, if that's the going rate, then something's wrong with government.
I, I'd really like to follow up and kind of hope in the same philosophy here, we're talking about it, convert it to police. Go back, going to, I think, eight vacancies, and this is a battle that has been fought my entire eleven years on the board, up, down, up, down. But I think the difference now, one of, one of my key differences at least philosophically is, we have people putting a lot of assets in this town, a lot of money. We gotta protect those assets. If you can't protect the little bubble, then we're not gonna bring their bubbles here. And safety is the first word, you know, in this statement. And we know a lot of factors outside of our control. Education, poverty level, needs to increase. But one factor that is in our control is how much we pay our officers and trying to keep them here. Um, so, I, I, my philosophy is I just, I don't have a problem with increasing the officer's salary.
Not a bit.
And I wasn't fussing about these, so I'm just saying I think that they should be increased more than what they are. And I understand how you guys, but and I'm not arguing that, I'm just saying, I just wanna throw it out there to everybody to think about. That as we go through the budget.
As we look at projected revenues, we might be able to see where we have some, uh, playroom to increase that.
It, it's, it's a very legitimate point, and it's something we always look at, because I think we're always surprised with a position like that, if you think this is the way the year makes a big jump, and that one just doesn't seem to. It's, it's just following the data. Um, I, I will say that the, one of the things we just try to keep in mind is we want to make sure that when we bump up a position like that and take care of the, the street maintenance workers, that we don't create other forms of compression by moving that up to equal with a position. Other forms of compression by moving that up to equal with a position that would be otherwise graded higher. So I, I agree with your premise. I just wanna make sure that if, if we do that, that you. You create, you preserve the balance across all of the grades in doing so.
I have a follow up question.
This is a street supervisor, great maintenance supervisor, man, good year.
Hold on, let's see. It, it's grade eight, so the minimum's forty-five. Um, on that society.
And that, so that would be what, if we upgrade that, that's what. Or is that?
That's what, that's what it's currently, but it's not one that was proposed to change at the time.
Oh, so the other ones only, just ones that will be increased.
That's correct. Okay, that's right.
I have a question.
That's, that's one emphasis. We look at all positions. This is just the only number of the markets you need to change.
Um, we, we got real straight, street maintenance workers here from the ten firm listed. Is that all we have or are there others that are responsible for?
Oh.
The others are already making more than the new minimum.
So this is just for the, this one grade.
Yeah, so if you work at, look at the street maintenance workers at thirty-one, nine, eighty-four, those are all new people that have come since last.
Okay, but it's not, it's not, it's not meant to reflect that we only have three straight, straight.
These are the only ones that are.
These are entry level, these are truly entry level jobs. What are the work level requirements? Uh, or I'm sorry, a GED, high school diploma for this. Okay, a sixteen, eighty per hour.
Yes.
That's pretty, it's actually really decent for entry level wage, in my opinion.
It's a first full-time job for most people you're hiring.
So at least those were typically on. Score like eighteen, nineteen years.
I mean, not always, but I, I'd say at least in my team, you got, I think you've seen a bigger shift.
Is this a demographic of, like, you know, his first job is demographic of teenagers living at homes, still sending presents when they're first job?
I can't say that across the board. I'd say there might be some of that, but not, not across the board.
So you wouldn't, it's not enough for you to generalize it, is that?
No, I can't. I, I wouldn't say you see a greater trend with, to younger employees. Right. Now, keep in mind, if you remember last year, the board approved certification program for the public works department. So individuals, for example, that got their CD, you know, we re-classify them to be equipment operators. And that, and that bumps them automatically to a higher grade, which was, I believe around forty thousand. Um, let's see, forty thousand, eight, twenty, just for, just for taking advantage of that opportunity.
They could increase their salary themselves.
They increase their salary.
We should increase, you know, we should encourage people to invest themselves and, and, uh, cause that, that helps the organization as well.
And to be cross-trained. So like you're saying, it really, it allows them to have more of an opportunity to grow. Rather than starting off too high and then not being able to grow.
That's right.
Starting off too high. See, that would be a genuine worry in mind. Also, guys, I look at the entry level jobs and statistically, most people throughout their whole lives, you don't, they don't stay in the same income bracket their whole life. So it's a really important thing to look at as people are young and make less money as they get older. Typically, they are making significantly more money in a completely different income bracket. Something to consider with that. Um, sorry to get in the weeds, but that is something considered.
But the problem too, Alan, you look, look at Silver City as a whole, most of the people are staying within about the same income bracket. We're not, um, the poverty level and everything, we're, they're not. Hopefully with walk speed coming and everything else that'll change, but right now it's, like, people have been stuck in the same.
I, I think the concern, and, and this is across all levels of the development, not just Silver City issues, you have much faster turnover. So the, the opportunity to, to say, we're gonna hire this person as a street maintenance worker to one day be a street maintenance supervisor, you know. You're likely to go through several generations of employees before you keep finding that one person that's gonna stay long-term with you. Where it used to be everybody stepped, now you might have, at a point, one, one or two that stick around past five years. Um, that's just, that's just an abolition of the market. So we just have to make sure the physicians take that into consideration to make sure. I would get them up to speed as fast as possible. I would instruct it so that when the turnover, things just don't stop. That people know what to do and the authorities are prepared for that.
Well, you have to.
Yeah.
Well, you have to look at the trend anyway, overall with, um, people who are going into jobs. Our generation, we stay.
Right.
The younger generation, they're only gonna stay for so long and then they're ready to go to the next place. So that's what, a lot of what we're dealing with is the movement.
And, and it's all just gonna be different within each department because it's, you know, they're facing different opportunities with other organizations, we stand by. At, at this level, the challenge that you face is the other opportunities they may get for employment, maybe private sector, construction positions. Where someone may say, well, I'll be forty thousand, but we're not gonna offer you to do this. And a lot of employees are in that trade. We look at benefits for, you know, another dollar to an hour. Whereas, whereas in a higher level position, we'll find a department that may not make that trade. Uh, so it's just one of those things you have to consider. It's gonna lead to more, more turnover.
Well, I, you know, really, when you're, yeah, and, and that's just looking around the room and we got several new faces. And so that turnover is from top to bottom, pretty much.
It is.
A, and so, uh, there's really no way to stop that from happening.
No.
A job comes along, you're out of it. It's that simple. I mean, you know, people are not working. Are looking at loyalty. They're looking at what this job can do for me.
Yeah, I, I think the difference is organizations don't need to look at a higher level turnover as a failure on the organization.
On the same day.
Yeah, but I think that's a cultural change every year is when forty stays two or three years and advances themselves for another opportunity, they still could have been very successful. For themselves and for the town.
Yeah.
And, and building their resume, their accomplishments. I'm sorry.
I wonder if this could have.
What kind of benefits do we have? I would let Nancy speak to that. She can go put more confidence in on that.
So, um, the town pays one hundred percent of an employee's health insurance. We offer dependent coverage back in twenty twenty-two, I believe it was, we grandfathered. Um, employees in to where we were, we're still paying for those. That elected fifty percent of their dependent coverage, but all new hires six then are paying it completely out of pocket. That's the health insurance. Um, through the North Carolina retirement system, we offer, um. A life insurance plan once that you've been here a year, you become eligible for a death benefit, just one times your salary. Um, no less than twenty-five thousand, but no greater than fifty thousand. Um, and the town contributes, um, to the retirement system each month. As well as contributes five percent to a 401K plan for each employee. Um, we pay one hundred percent of every employee's short-term, uh, short-term disability. In front of plan, we pay one hundred percent for an employee's telemedicine. Uh, policy that rely on these is good for them and their whole family, anyone living in their household. Uh, before COVID, they had to plan the mixture for the rest of their family, but. Since, it went away in COVID and now they're paying one hundred percent for everybody in the household. Um, we pay for a fifty thousand dollar life insurance policy. That's in addition to what the state has with the retirement. And a few years ago, the board, um, elected to make it fifty thousand for everybody, regardless of the salary. Um, we offer dental, vision, critical illness, cancer, accident. Term life insurance, long-term disability, all those are things that they can elect to take as a, um. Deduction from their paycheck. We also offer, um, thirteen holidays a year, twelve sick days a year, those stay consistent. And then with the vacation policy, vacational pool rates, it goes up when you hit different bands of service. Um, I think ours is one to three, it's four hours per payroll. We have thirty-six payrolls a year. Then it goes up, um, after the sixth year and then it continues going up to the highest amount is anything over eighteen years. Um, and I think along with our health insurance for those employees that do stay and retire. And have thirty years in when they retire from us. Um, then the town will pay one hundred percent of their health insurance until they reach age sixty-five. Then when they reach age sixty-five and become, um, Medicare eligible, then we drop them. Um, but they have the Medicare insurance. So, um, I think that's a really quick synopsis of our, our benefits.
Can I ask this question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, based on what we're looking at tonight and I think the agreement is. Everybody's, um, talking about the police department. So, and their increase is, uh, what is that?
Seven thousand nine hundred and four.
Twenty-seven thousand, eighty, hundred and twenty-eight thou- uh, dollars, forty-seven, eight, twenty-eight is what's on this front page. Am I correct?
You're correct.
So if we did that, 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 I'm, I'm asking a question. Okay, we're planning a decrease for the police department, cause guys, I don't wanna get stuck in the weeds. I wanna get something done and I wanna soon. To kind of move forward, uh, if we go ahead and did the police department. At that forty-seven, eight, twenty-eight. Uh, and approve that particular piece. Now, work on this. It, it's gonna be piecemeal, it's pretty much same as all the way that we're gonna get through this. But we have to get through, we have to get somewhere. So if we approve that increase for the, the police department and then move on to the next department.
Of course. I, I mean, I guess I'm asking, when you say approved, are you talking about approving for July one or are you talking about approving for today? When, when is it?
You said forty-seven, eight, twenty-eight, that's what I'm looking at.
Cause I, I think there's, there's two things here that I just need to approve. The comp study.
Yes, sir.
And, and the physician classification plan, which we haven't discussed yet. And so I think that the way you're saying is out of the comp study. And I'll step to the bathroom, but I guess there's an agreement on the police.
Double lieutenant, police officer, one lieutenant, police officer, investigator, something.
So I think what he's saying is let's move forward with that piece and maybe this is the others later.
And, and if we're right on out, if it approved, we don't have to revisit that. That's a done deal.
That's all.
Okay, then.
That's, that's how this whole process has to work.
Yeah, it's on the very front of the page and it's, uh, it's a potential of forty-seven, eight.
I was talking about to Ingris, to be in there. First salary, I'm like.
That you were asking for. That they were asking, the police department was asking.
Question, the, the men, the men, uh, minimum mid and max, what are we comparing that to? What markets did we get that data from? For minimum mid and max, where do we obtain that data where fifty-two is the bottom? For a police officer, fifty-two, uh, fifty-two thousand ninety-eight?
For the police officer? Compensation study.
But what, what markets did we analyze? Were we, you said Pittsburgh and Randolph, you said Randolph County?
Eighteen, differently. Um, we have, we started out with like thirteen or fourteen my very first year and then we added. Some other markets, but this year, um, and, and when we added those, that was. Different counties around us that we have to compete with, specifically losing police officers. Lieutenants, all police personnel to like Chatham County, Lee County, Randolph County. So we added those in, so there's probably twenty-ish, um, different agencies that we look at.
Okay.
And then we had a method, we had a methodology to that. So, you know, when we look at Apex and Wade County. Then we have a methodology where we look at, we take out anything twenty percent above or twenty percent below. What we're currently paying, so we don't skew it up or down.
Bringing apples and oranges, what, what was Randolph's comparison? Do you remember? Fifty-three, five, fifty-three, five was Randolph. Cause that would be our closest competitor, so.
Yeah, they just in a, a, um, meeting a couple of weeks ago, they approved. Um, increases for everyone in the sheriff's department.
You're talking about Chatham County.
Chatham County, who'd you say?
Police officers for Ashboro and Ransour, Franklin, um, Franklinville, just our closest competitors where they may be able to poach our officers for good recruits. I think we need to be really competitive with that particular market because they're so close to us. Do you know what that, what that pay is?
I do not remember right off the top of my head.
I would just say we heard us to try to pay at least what they're, they're already paying. So that, that's a, that's a large market out there. We should potentially fill the eight voids.
We actually have more Randolph County officers and Alamance County officers coming here under the previous, uh, police chief.
Okay, but.
They came from those areas here.
Fifty-two, fifty-two thousand ninety-eight, I thought was less than what that area was paying. I was, I was advocating for maybe paying a little bit more to be a little bit more competitive.
Well, we are, we are.
Okay. And I don't know if the number is, if we actually are at this point, we, we don't know that's a certain.
Yeah, we, 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 we keep, keep in mind too, something we have, we're not factoring in that we do specifically for police officers. Is we have incentives that we add on top of this salary. So they get one percent on top of the base for each year of experience up to ten. They get two and a half percent on top of that for each degree level and five percent if they happen to be violating. So this is the four. So most people come in with their, when they're hired with something to their name, so.
Something violating, well, they start at approximately fifty-seven thousand with the new rates.
That's correct. If they didn't have anything else to, to their name.
That's correct. I'm satisfied with that. I didn't know that. Thank you.
Chief, if we, um, I know you've got many positions, so it's gonna. How fast do you think you'd be able to get those positions going, implement this, this, I mean, we're in the budget season, but. Maybe we'll advertise it. Tell me if you think that'll help you.
I think it's gonna help to find it. I think there's. Uh, I was a little late, cause I was over at Ship River and I apologize for that. I'm talking with the officers. Uh, and, uh, I think it's gonna help those pools on to some other counties. I know there's some that are kind of waiting to see what's gonna happen with the pay. Uh, so I do think it's gonna help. We've been doing some interviews, uh, this week.
And traditionally, we've lost the priority to the county. You think, uh, this gonna help us stay competitive with the county?
I do, yes.
Do you have any, besides the eight they're listed here? Got any other positions that are currently vacant besides these, these eight? Do you have any sergeants?
Sergeant position.
We have, uh, currently we have five patrol police officers vacancies. We have, um, one detective lieutenant provision. And then we got the two investigators that, uh, we ran back into the budget, we might have to deal with. So that's eight. Um, and then there's, uh, the proposal for a captain's position.
But some of those positions you just took off for much higher than entry level. Like a detective.
Yes, sir. They are a little bit ahead of entry level.
So at some point, we're, we still need to address the two detective positions, the captain. The one's recovering your lieutenant, when you cover the sergeant, or that would be a little lower than sergeant?
They're not on that list based on the forty-seven, eight, two, eight. Um, but we do have to be mindful of that compression. Um, so.
And do you have any, uh, what, do you, let me, let me definitely word this right. Internally, can people be promoted?
Yes, sir. They can apply for the position, yes.
Okay, okay. That, I, I think I worded it the way I wanted. Without, you know, so.
So we, they do, do you have some?
Bomb people up.
From current. Patrol, is it, is it, is it the sergeant, you got a sergeant of patrol, I'm guessing?
Yes.
So you think you got some folks ready to move from regular patrol to sergeant?
Yes, sir. We've actually got, I believe, three candidates.
That's what I wanted to hear.
But then leave a void with a other police.
Or promoting from there.
Exactly.
Well, uh. That's what I want.
Yeah.
Yes, exactly. How about, um, the ones that are at grade level eleven?
That's, that's, they're, they're both in two eleven.
But the ones that are at eleven, are they similarly trained?
Well, uh. Well, uh, that's.
The, the ones that are on the. What, what do they call it, a new grade eleven? Are they similarly trained and, I mean, pretty much the same training to get to that eleven? I mean, I'm trying, I'm trying to say it right.
Yes, sir, for the entry level, yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure, I said you correctly, Hank, you said one percent um for every year of experience in addition to the minimum?
Yes.
What was the additional compounding interest that you said?
That's up to ten.
You're business, but, hey, sorry.
And then two and a half percent for each degree level.
Oh, okay.
So like two and a half for associates, seven and a half for a masters, five for their bachelors.
Wow, okay.
So.
So ten years would equate like fifty-two hundred dollars plus violating, that, that would give them ten thousand right? Top of the fifth.
About five percent.
So then.
And those assumptions apply to every position in the police department besides the chief.
Right.
So they apply to the captain position too?
They would.
Yeah, I have a question. I have no science. I just have, I just get a comment, you know, you know, most of the position on police, and they made it very clear, in the past ten years, I had a unfortunate um. Closing of the night, someone buying a very expensive house in the neighborhood. He asked me how's crime rate? And that was a conversation I didn't like to have that client, but you know, I had to tell, tell the truth. So, you know, the, when you have stuff like this. Um, and later we're gonna be on the wish list, it's gonna be times, it's our time to fix that.
Yeah.
For some.
I see, I, I got one more question, and, and this is concerning, the crime rate. I know you just got here, but are you looking at petty crime, violent crime, robberies? Because. I don't, we don't hear about those things, most, the root is, is a car wreck or something of that nature. So what, what are we actually looking at in the town of Solace City?
We look at it all, and obviously the violent crime is, is a major concern um to us, but we, we're looking at all. Currently in the middle of doing an assessment of the police department. Overall, operationally and, and, and throughout, and um, I haven't, currently trying to get some of that statistical data together. I've got investigations, uh, running me some statistical data, and I don't know what cases are still up, what are we doing to close these cases?
Right.
Uh, what type cases are we working on? You know, unfortunately, currently, we only have two detectives. Um, and uh, so we're not able to be as proactive as I'd like towards the beginning, talking about, you know, uh, a safe community. We need to, you know, we need to be proactive. Um, and uh, the drug related issues and things like that, you've gotta get on top of that.
I'm really trying to figure out what may be missing. There's no murders, things have been robbed, don't know about convenience store robberies. So what is driving this crime rate up? It's got to be something that is not.
We have a lot of unreported crimes.
That's what I'm saying, um.
We have a lot of sexual assault that go unreported.
That's what I wanna know.
We have a lot of uh minor D and Es that go unreported into people's cars. Um, and we got a lot of drug, a lot of drug activity goes unreported. I think when Chief is saying, if I put Rosie in my mouth, you stop me. I think when Chief is saying we need to. Right now, he means reported, and reported, all of it.
But that could get more proactive.
Yeah.
Some of the shortages, and we're reacting.
That's right.
Yes, yeah, that's not what we're doing to make our community, you know?
Yeah.
There was a time when we were so lucky, that when we did the, uh, when we did the Christmas parade. We had one, one officer for the rest of the town, a few, a few years back, that's where we were.
I'm able to say that too loud.
That's true. So we had definitely been off the road, but we still, we still got work to do.
The, the, the balance of all this, we're, the challenge for Solace City is we're a very small town and a very big market in the surrounding hour driving radius. So one of the things you gotta be conscious of too, and I think, I think this is the right number to land at, is if you were trying to say, well, let's bump that up even more. Unfortunately, your peers are gonna notice that immediately and they're gonna adjust theirs too. So you're, you're, you're just gonna, you're gonna, you're kinda calling that rat race where we're all trying to keep up. So you don't wanna reset the market, it's all a city, you just wanna try and keep up with it.
So. If I don't all be in the way, if they are reaching that, I don't know what we're paying.
Yeah.
And, and what are we asking for in a new budget, I'm just not responding to some of this, because we're calling that competitive.
All right, I know, I, I like to say some, so I, I'd like for the board to also consider, look, uh, go back to the parks and rec department. Um, I don't know if it would entail hiring some part-time help or more full-time help to have the gyms open all day long so people can enjoy them. Um, and I know that uh they, if, if it's there, they will go, and it's just like the other parks and stuff, I think that, um. I had a conversation with someone I work with and I can't really talk about it, but he talked to me about wanting to bring something big here for Solace City that involved the rec. And I don't know if that's gonna happen or not, but Tyler, you know what I'm talking about, did you, did he talk to you?
I, I did.
Did you talk to Mr. Auburn?
I did.
Oh, yes, yes.
I've talked to him.
Yeah.
Yeah.
About, I don't, I'm not gonna mention what it is, cause I don't even know that it's a go, but, but you did talk to him.
I talked to him, he's gonna draft some, some playoffs.
But that's gonna, that's gonna also require more help for the rec department.
I don't think so, I think they're gonna be self-sufficient, they're supposed to take care of this themselves.
But it's a big deal.
Yeah, but it is a big deal, you're right.
But we do need to look at having the gyms open.
Yeah.
And that, that's hiring, I'd say we need to have more people.
I mean, still got the bonus for those who hire. They have a bonus, you hire, stay so long, you get a bonus.
The, the police department still has a hiring bonus program, yeah.
The, the improvement bonus is what we do.
So are we gonna approve anything else, or just the police department?
He had mentioned the parks and rec too.
And but she wanted to bump it up, so we need to figure out what you wanna do with it, and if we can do those two and get those out of the way tonight, I think we have accomplished something, so.
And we're gonna hit the town fund, street maintenance workers, or just, or just?
Let's do that.
I'll, I'll, I have a connection between, so we can move on to the next topic. As for the, the proposed compensation study, not addressing the position classification, just the comp study. I make a motion to go ahead and approve uh the increases in salary in grade for the parking director. Police lieutenant, all police officers, and the street maintenance workers in the, in the ten fund.
So. It's been moved upon it, second, that the, the salary increases that are showed here in comprehensive fund be. A group. What?
Because you got one that's in there that we saw, that we aren't talking about.
Which one?
There, the uh, which one did you call? All right, he said.
Parks and rec.
And we didn't do the administrative specialist.
But he said in the, he was getting ready to say the blanket thing and not break it down into the ten fund, cause you said.
Oh, yeah, I see, just the ten, I mean, but I'm okay if the board's okay with adding that. Admin, I can rephrase that motion. Um, basically, I think it'd be easier to say, I make a motion, we approve all ten fund increases with the exception of the public works director.
Sorry. It's been moved in private second that all increases in the ten fund, with the exception of the public works director, be approved. All in favor, vote by, sign about. All opposed, add the sign right, motion carried, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
No, that was my classification study. I, I have a, a question on the classification study. If I was comparing it to. The ones, and this, you just got, it was definitely on this. I was comparing it to the grades from twenty-three. It needs to be the proposed grades from twenty-four. Why don't we just have? For twenty-three, we are all thirty listed, how come we don't have all thirty listed for twenty-four, twenty-five?
All thirty grades?
Right, like we, if we're, if we're, if we're revisiting the classification studies for our grades. Um, I count one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. The fifth grade, the thirteen, fifteen, eighteen, twenty, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-seven, twenty-nine, thirty. That were not on the, on twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five, so maybe I'm just misunderstanding the purpose of the list. When compared to the twenty-twenty-three list. If I'm, I'm not saying the purpose.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of holding on, follow what you're requesting.
So, so the purpose to, uh, on this, you know, page from twenty, twenty-five to fifty-two.
Fifty-two.
Well, here. Here, forty-five, fifty-two, is the purpose to discuss an increase in grades? For all positions?
No.
Okay, cause this one, this one had all the positions with all the grades, twenty-three, three records, materials in the packet.
Right.
So this one, this one for twenty-four, twenty-five doesn't, doesn't address every single classification.
Doesn't address every classification.
Don't address the fifth, thirteen.
Are you saying there's no position that has a grade five beside it?
Yeah, so that was what I was confused about.
So, well, also, the, the, the grades of one to thirty just represent where the market falls and it's a five percent gap between each grade. We just look at where, when we look at the study, where, where the salary falls most appropriately in the study and put it in that appropriate grade.
You're saying these positions need an adjustment, not the entire grading scale?
Not changing the scale up.
Just changing the classification of these positions.
That's correct.
Do, uh, can you know what each position is currently paid before we make a decision on this?
You have that, that's what's, that's what this is.
No, I mean, we have a legal and a max, we don't have what they're paying.
It's the minimum, what they're making, some of them.
You mean the individual in the job banks, that's a different question, we have that.
That can be a, a ca- another column on the sheets.
Because what's the, what's the highest percentage to, that, that you have calculated going from men to, to mid on the salary?
They're, they're all the same, so.
Percentages are?
It's five percent between each grade.
There's.
I'm talking about the grade, I'm talking about the salary. What's the percentages, what's the highest percentage of? Whatever one is the highest, so let me just say.
Are you asking if anyone's mixed up?
What?
Are you asking if anyone's mixed out on their?
No, 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 no. Nancy had mentioned before that she threw out anything above twenty percent, is that correct?
That's on a comp study.
It's on comp.
When we try to determine where, and where an employee falls. So, so let's say we have a position and we do a comp study and the, it comes in at um thirty-nine thousand two hundred. That's what it comes to, we go to this sheet right here. And it says that the closest to thirty-nine thousand two hundred is grade six, forty thousand eight twenty. That's where that person would start. I mean, that, that's what we would propose to you for the comp study. Um, and say, if last year, uh, the comp study came in at thirty-five thousand. Then we, it would have been at a three, so it would have been at thirty-five, two sixty-two, and that's how much growth has been in the market.
Yeah, I guess I'm confused, okay, but let me just choose one, one thing, does it matter if I, I'm gonna choose the chemist, for example. So I'm not even looking at the grade, I'm looking at the minimum amount, so are you suggesting that? We should move from the minimum amount of any person on here to the mid or totally not the max? You're not suggesting that at all?
We're not suggesting anything.
Okay, you're just showing.
You're suggesting, right.
Okay, I know, but the reason why I said that was because uh I calculated some and some have gone up as much as thirty percent.
You're talking about the difference from the mid to the max?
No, between the men and the mid.
Oh, it was between the two, those two.
Thirty percent, yeah.
Right, that's, that's why I was. The difference in the man and the max and the mid, I mean, the men and the mid, and the mid to the max for every position should be the same.
Same, same.
Not for percentages, not if I calculated it correctly.
No, I need to go back and look at that because.
Wait a minute, just go ahead and talk, I'm, I'm.
I, I'll go back and review that too, Sandy, because theoretically, I mean, actually, it should be. If it's fifteen percent for grade four, uh, between the men and the mid, if you go down to level twenty-six, it should be fifteen percent.
Okay, well, like, for one of them, I got point three, I had for one of them, I got point two nine nine. And let me just, let me just choose another one.
Chief, well, she's bringing in, um, a senior, Detective Lieutenant. Those are the other positions you were talking about earlier.
Yes.
Yeah. The, the, the police positions are down here.
Now, since your wish list, since we've already approved the other officers.
This is for the.
Yeah, so I'm getting anywhere to point three.
This is for.
I think I checked one between the mid and the max. That's what I was thinking. I was, I have, I can't always say. It's not because of this, it's because of that.
I'm gonna check them off with it.
I mean, you don't have to do that, uh, because I was, now that I was thinking about you, it was more like. I don't want to.
I'm asking to help them with those entry level positions.
Are, are there any other questions about the position classification plan?
Uh, just one.
Yes, sir.
Scott, nothing to do with the.
Okay.
But the budget manager.
Yes.
Placed uh eliminated the assistant finance director plus the budget analyst positions.
Correct.
At the meeting, we talked about this.
Yes.
It also said this person is gonna take on even resources because Nancy was soon retired.
I said it should supervise, I didn't say it would take over, it's supervi- it could supervise that.
Who's gonna be in the resource, right, I thought they were taking on that.
I didn't say that.
You didn't say that.
Is that gonna supervise, I mean, it's, one of the, one of the confusion, it's a short word choice of supervise.
We need to supervise.
Well, I, I, I don't remember you saying supervisor, I thought you meant that they could gradually take over what you, your resources.
That's a no, that, I, yeah, I agree with that.
Did you not say that?
Yes, I said that.
Okay.
Yes.
This is. Succession planning.
Yes, this is personal, whatever that.
Yes.
Okay, I would not have that be included on this list. So when the time comes, they won't say, we didn't say that.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, the person's hearing it right now.
I just wanna make sure it was in the minutes, that, that's, that's what we were told. So if we're gonna eliminate three positions, I'm okay.
It would be helpful if we had current salaries all based on, and since the minimum.
Is that not what we said?
Yeah. So if we could, we can do that, uh, that would be helpful, what they're currently making in these uh positions. As far as administrative support specialist, which I thought we just done. On the other page.
What's the difference between those two?
There shouldn't be any of those. I mean, that's.
Is it the same person?
Yes. This is just, this is just the comprehensive listing of the grades for all positions. Where the previous page you were discussing was just what was affected by the compensation study. So it's not, it's not two different things, it's just, one's carved out and one's the whole thing. So we can see all the positions.
We just approved the minimum, but that.
That's fine.
We haven't approved this classification plan yet, the.
No, no, but.
It's, it's gotta be different, you wouldn't need two different charts.
Well, I I I mean. For transparency, I just figured you want all the position, all the grades to be able to see that, just not just the grades of. The ones that change in the comp study.
So what what's the, that's the result of approving what's on page forty-five? Versus the result of approving what's on page thirty-six?
It's one, it's all one document, both pages still again, as a complete compensation study. This is just the guide. That we use to create this one.
Uh, uh, I'm sorry.
This page is the guide.
Which page is it?
Page, well, I'm looking in the old. The one that did grades revised July twenty twenty-three.
Grades revised July twenty twenty-three.
This is the guy. To create the previous page, where the five and forty-six.
Twenty-three is the guy for forty-five and forty-six. And Sid has answered your question about what's the difference between forty-five and forty-six and forty-four? My motion just occurred, thirty, a portion of forty-four.
Right.
The only difference in this document now, it incorporates. This information.
This information here.
This is the whole.
Is the same, is the same as the information on this page. And the next page. It's all a part of.
An extraction from.
That's not what we approved.
No, we approved this. Along with the grades that's here. But this is like the legend for the grades.
So I think once Sanford does take over certain operations, how many employees will be left? Uh, under the town supervision.
That's everything, minus twenty-five.
You said ninety-four?
So we're talking about eighty-seven. Unless we put in a small.
Sixty-nine.
So what what's is the same as twenty-three?
But all then it paid on here. This. Is what changed, it only. From the previous phase, what changed? On the previous phase, the minimum has been updated.
No, it's just to make it more competitive in the market.
I'm just gonna make an observation based on that five-hour meeting. What I'm looking at on page forty-five is no increase from twenty-three. So, though softly theoretically, I don't have a problem with it. But you, hopefully you understand by now that for certain positions, department head and the look. We would like to be kept informed. You know, not just informed the night of. We would like to be kept in the loop. On what's going on with that hire, department heads are vital important to the town. Uh, I mean. So yes, you know, you you made comments in the past, what's approved in the budget. So yes, the 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 these are, the minimum max is approved in the budget by statute, you do have authority. For personnel. But we aren't in control of purse strings, so even though we give you a range. We still want you to keep us in the loop of what you're doing on that.
I understand.
Um, cuz ultimately. We, and Alex said it best one night. We're gonna be spending money like it's our money, not somebody else's money.
Well, you're gonna have to speak up, I can't hear.
So, that's what I'm saying, I don't, there's, there's no change uh from the page forty-seven to forty-five. I would just like to be kept in the loop more. On what's going on.
At the end of the day, if if the town manager, any town manager decides, and he looks at their list. And he says, you know, I don't like what I see in the part, but. The max is whatever it is. Uh, I know he didn't raise him up ten thousand dollars. Uh, because again, because it's here. So how do you? Manage that? Because at some point. You could very easily tip the scales and you're over some of the compensation study, what it exactly shows.
The way you manage that is when you do the budget. You don't. Budget for anything that's in excess of the max. Uh, so you look at your revenues and say, okay. We'll just use two salaries, for example, let's say are the total, the total expenses for the town. Are two hundred thousand dollars, and we have two one hundred thousand dollar salaries, and our projected revenue is two hundred thousand, so we're. Our balance sheet balances. So at that point, you wouldn't raise, and you say that's our max salary, and so you're not gonna raise up above that. Because on the other side of your balance sheet, you don't have the revenues to cover it, cuz that's, that's gonna be right there. So, that's how you budget for it, you just. You have a new budget that, based on your revenues, nothing exceeds the max. And that way you don't go into home, you don't go into red.
Uh, that's not what I'm saying, that's not the question.
Okay.
What I'm asking is, what's the bail stop from everybody making the max? What, what, what prevents that?
That would exceed. Cuz that would exceed the total budget.
I set the max at this number. And all the numbers are you.
But that's not.
And I set it at this number, that's the max you got on the paper.
But I can't.
So everybody has the potential of making that max.
Right, but if I didn't budget it, I can't pay it. It doesn't matter what's on the sheet, though.
It's still not where I'm at with this. Okay. This, this, this sheet here. As a ma- a minimum and a max. Okay, this is what you're going to guide that by, this is what we will eventually approve.
Right.
What's to stop anybody, not you, from paying everybody the max?
The limitations within that annual budget.
We approved it, what you've said it yourself, it's in the budget.
Your.
You said this. Looking for a backstop.
Budget doesn't, you don't, you, when you prepare your budget, you don't budget for those positions. At the max, that that pay plan just lays out. This is the minimum and this is the max, you don't budget paying everybody the max. You couldn't afford to pay everybody the max.
That is actually possible, because think about it, okay? You already a hundred thousand dollars, and then we come into July and we pay you, say, the cost of living increase. That brings you above. Uh, almost to your max. See, there's no bail state to stop that from happening unless we don't, unless the board decides we're not giving toll of this year.
The budget is the bill saying, what's the budget for in the budget? And you don't, when you prepare the budget, you do not budget for your positions to be paid. At the maximum.
Well, I think why the mayor is bringing that up, one of the things was that we found out. On the five-hour meeting that one position went from seventy-five thousand to a hundred and fifteen thousand, so obviously it was budgeted. Somewhere. I mean, I don't think anybody sitting on the board at that time would have thought that we would have budgeted enough for the max.
Well, you didn't, you didn't, you didn't.
Well, but we didn't, but yet it went. From here to here, you see what I'm saying?
The policy to train, they're running somewhere else in the budget.
It doesn't matter, what matters is that forty thousand dollars is a big jump. That's, that's more than some of these people on here make in a year. That's what your, is.
And there's no bail safe there, I don't care what, how you look at it, because if you have the ability to look, take the budget and say, and you just. It would just state it, well, we saved it over here, so we're able to spend it over here. What is the bail say to stop? One individual going from seventy thousand to a hundred and fifteen thousand, same job.
We need to reclassify that money for a different position.
But isn't there a process that requires, was, if you're gonna be moving over five or ten percent in the budget, you have to get that approved by the board, right?
No.
No?
Because it, what is, what has been told to us time and time again. It's in the budget. So if you're able to reclassify and shift positions. You're using money that's already been allocated, you're just doing it in a, in a different manner. And it's really up to the managers, uh. He doesn't, he doesn't have to by statute. So, I'm asking again, what is the backstop to keep that from happening?
So do you have a, whether it's not?
What, the fa- the fail say is, the budget always has to stay balanced, that's, that's the, that's the answer. I can't spend money, the money's not there, I can't spend it.
I understand that, that's, you still missed the question that I asked. Seventy thousand to a hundred and fifteen thousand by manipulating the budget to get it done.
Saving thirty-three thousand.
Oh, that's what you say, we want finished. And I, I'm not trying, I'm just asking a question, what prevents that from happening?
Like, if we're gonna be consulted before. That big of an increase. How do we accomplish, I think it's for the mayor's.
I think you already have, in saying you want communication. I think you already addressed it. What is?
We still haven't approved the classification plan. We still haven't done the revenue projections or the thought they were a class. So we're still two point one.
And what do you, well.
I guess you need a motion on the classification plan.
Not if we want to see the salaries of what they're making prior.
Oh, that's right.
And that's what we'd ask for.
See, my brain's getting fuzzy.
A standstill. To next meeting, and let this be it. Or we go to the uh proposed revenue and go back to that at a later date.
I'd like to at least start getting the proposed revenue, as we haven't had a talk about it, yeah.
I, I, I want, I want full revenues for the night, let's talk about expenditures. I want, I want to go over that some more.
I don't wanna keep coming back.
For expenditures?
So I'm assuming that's the wish list of each department? Am I right on that?
The what is? That's your, that's your other package tonight. That's, that's pleasure of the board. Are we, are we skipping the other personnel items? Of compensation pools and cost of living increases?
I just see. Those classification plans. I'm sorry?
I think the mayor wanted to say, uh, a list of each person, personally, the personnel list and their salaries before we went on to look at the cost of living. Am I the correct mayor? So we're gonna revisit that, is, is that what you're asking?
On that classification from page forty-five.
Do you have to have a motion to do that and to go on to the department, Nicholas?
So the power increase. Is asking for one sixty-four. And that's on page forty-eight.
Sorry, it's a little topic with the um. The fifty hour class, others being, I think based on eight-hour work days, you guys work eight-five, separate. Typically, these employees.
No, I understand, not quite, and everybody's, everybody's schedule is not.
On the last page, who's our insurance provider, we're talking about. No, I don't get, I know they're, they're not the actual. So you know. So what one is just the administrator?
Part three.
What grade of plan? Several arrangements?
Yes.
Is the deductible gonna change?
No, it should be at least the same plan as last year, if not, um, enriched, I have a meeting with you one day next week.
Okay.
So the deductible remains the same?
Yeah.
The third one, which requested on pages forty-eight, forty-nine. And that is right, it's a hundred and seventy-three thousand. Two hundred and eighty-four dollars. Is that right?
You, you're adding one sixty-four to nine, ninety-four hundred? Yes.
Yeah.
Now, if this, uh, off the board, this is all stepped off the bar.
This one sixty, the one sixty-four number.
Also, I like this table that particular discussion.
And also, when we had that discussion, I'd like us to talk about how we can incorporate performance incentives rather than blanket increases to people's salaries.
That's on the next page.
Page uh forty-eight. When I was pointing at what you want on the table.
I want to tell you forty-eight and forty-nine.
Okay.
Forty-nine is what you were just referencing, uh. Uh, which is much longer than the color. Talk, talk to me a little bit about this vacation, I don't see monetary fees, just.
It's not, it's not, we're just trying to cover personnel issues all at one time, so it's just. Increasing the core rate, trying to be competitive with other entities.
Looks like they're increasing about one day across the board.
That's correct. Those are changes that the board has to approve, so we should, we just wanna bring that to your attention. I don't, I don't believe the board has had any objections to that in the past, when it's been brought up.
I think part of the problem. Here's, I don't know how it's done in the past, so I can't speak on that. It's getting it the night of and expecting it to.
How do you guys feel about adding a day for each bracket?
You asking that for an extra day of vacation?
Or did you say anything that doesn't cost, it doesn't cost town anything to have an extra PTO day?
I mean, not financially, I mean.
Decreases productivity, which you could measure.
Right. Maybe, that's, that's right.
It may, it's morale, and it may help market competitiveness too.
That's right. It's like kind of a qualitative. Yeah.
I'd like to. Um, I recommend we should make a provision for the proposed vacation. According to increase for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five effective first payroll. Uh, and July twenty twenty-four.
So what are you, what are you?
It's been moved and probably second that the, uh, rate of days being increased by one day. For, uh, employees. All in favor of our vote of honor, uh, both have a sign right motion carries.
Uh, the final page of that packet, which is listing is fifty-one, fifty-two. Are there any questions about health insurance? So that's really hard to keep that increase to thirty percent.
Yes, that's a small increase, but.
That's really good.
That says, actually, the problem is why I wasn't addressing it.
Oh, I said, are there any questions?
Well, obviously, I'd like to see, is a three percent increase, not a lot, a lot less than a hundred years past. But I still want to see the beginning of influence of those increases. Some of the ones we're paying for Cigna.
That seemed to carry a C.
Cigna, yeah. But, uh, years past when we had. Blue Cross through Shield, sometimes those increases were twenty percent a year.
Tell you with the, with the change to Mark three, this is, this is probably the earliest the board has ever known health insurance.
Well, three percent is, is a phenomenal work on their part to keep it low.
It, it's normally late April, May, you're looking at health insurance blocking in. So it's, it's a good number to already have.
If you're going with, going with the same policy.
Yeah, yeah.
And this coverage, Mark, Mark three is that, uh, the name of the insurance company? It's the broker.
That's the broker.
Insurance is Cigna.
Oh, so it's still.
I was like, oh, I've never heard of Mark three.
Then they do, they do a lot of mispronounces.
Thank you.
So now we're going to the, so. And so two point three.
Or was it sixteen?
I've been at it since seven A M. She don't teach her, right? Some of these private centuries, it covers that series. So he's got this giant truck. Little mini excavator, and she, she was just like. It's so weird about the privacy. I feel so bad. More Betty's just got the whole yard so that it looks like a.
Benny's son Jason and I wrote with.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and so.
I haven't met his son.
And Amber, who's married. That's our best friend. Pretty's the one that I'll stay in contact.
Just choose not to.
Just want to make sure I understand this.
Truly, that's not insignificant.
So you're looking at.
The town overall. I don't know, cause while we're talking, they said, we're gonna be ready to.
Yeah.
Okay, not the S O C because they.
Boy, that's a boy.
And, uh, and we'll talk to her.
Could you even say we've had citizenship races concerned? Any specific pretty address was framed?
I don't look at.
Very local.
He's got, like, he does everything, like, naturally, does, like, uh, rotational grazing. His chickens want to force the, uh, they have nutrients. This is pork is, um, free range. Right there, I was talking about you, I was like.
Man, I hear you, Donald.
This is what ended up being.
This is you here, though.
Child. I got seventy-eight. Know that song, Jimmy.
So what was allocated? Wow, we weren't. Two point three. Request this for year twenty-four, twenty-five.
So for regarding this packet now, um, and you'll notice you do have reference when we're talking, there are page numbers at the. Uh, bottom center of the pages. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we're talking about the.
Yes. I said, there are page numbers on the bottom. No, ma'am. So when we're talking, we can have a frame of reference. That's, that's up to you. This, it's, this is listed in order of the chart of accounts, but we don't have to follow that.
The first one I see when I turn to it is on page ten, which is Jax.
Right, if you want. Right. Right, it's, it's just the only way the chart of accounts call, though. The word, it's just, it's just the order of the chart of accounts, not, they're not ordered by any type of fraud. Right, so. Let me try and help explain what, how that layout looks on your sheet. So in that very first column on all these spreadsheet pages, you'll see where it says like ten, that references the fund, that's the general fund. The second, the second column, the three-digit code is the department number in the budget. The, the next column is a four-digit code, that's the line item code. So those same four digits correspond to the same, same type of items across all of the parts. So for example, on that first page, you see ten, four hundred, twenty-six hundred is advertising. Twenty-six hundred is advertising for all departments.
So remember what the second column means, advertising was always twenty-six hundred.
Correct. This, this, when we're talking, going through the budget, just give you a frame of reference, so I understand how to, see how to read the budget. Um.
And then let's see, uh.
So the notes are gonna tell you, uh, a, a description of, a, a little detail as to what is in that item.
What we spent advertising.
Correct.
And then the next column is what we spent.
That's what was budgeted for the twenty-two fiscal year. The next column is what's budgeted in the twenty-three fiscal year. And then the, the following column is the request that was made in the current year.
It says twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, that's aligned, okay.
That's aligned with the place for the current year we're in right now. The, the, the call, the next to the last column is a detailed request, so you'll see there's something. Like on that first page, when you get down to dues and subscriptions, you see a more detailed breakout because there's so many different things. So that's where that's beneficial, so you have to give you that explanation. Uh, where there's lots of things in the same line item, and then the last one, uh, of that listing will give you the total.
The total of what?
The total of that line item. So for example, you see a lot of things listed in detailed requests for dues and subscriptions on that first page.
Yeah.
But the next to the last line item in the final column, the total of sixteen thousand six dollars, that's the total of all the dues and subscriptions.
So we have two things. You're telling me that string is out to sixteen?
Correct.
Alright, so let's go up to the top then, the first one. How do you hit ten thousand if there's nothing in the column next to it?
Because it's, because there's only one deep, one item, so there wasn't anything to break out.
So there's no detailed request because it's one item?
Correct, because it, it, it depends itself, I mean, it's, that item is the, is the stipend for the mayor's position.
Well, advertising, there's just one, there's no, there's only one item for advertising, we'll advertise one thing?
It, no, well. No, I'm, I'm not saying that. It's, it's not any different from the notes. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, so the detailed request is covered in the notes.
Yes.
So the line item request, I'll get you, so that second last column is not a number, it's a description.
Correct.
I understand it. How come maybe if it's a description, how come we have some numbers here at the bottom?
Numbers in bottom, the highlighted yellow?
No, no, two thousand seven, one seventy-two, one thirty-four. If it's a description.
It's meant to be a, a detailed breakdown of dues and subscriptions that totals to sixteen thousand six dollars.
Okay, well, why don't we have the detailed request in the columns of, of. Dunham Bradstreet, that Dunham Bradstreet line, how come we don't have a question there?
For the Dunham Bradstreet.
We'll see, that's, that's two thousand, Dunham Bradstreet says two thousand.
That's correct.
And so I guess that's telling us that the Dunham Bradstreet. Proposed at, uh, dues and subscription for the upcoming fiscal year would be two thousand dollars, right?
That's correct.
You made that right? Okay, so let's just go up to office supply, uh, supplies, general office supplies.
Okay, so we're looking at, uh, ten, four hundred, thirty-three hundred.
Yeah, two thousand, three thousand, three thousand. So what's the request for this next budget year for office supplies?
Three thousand.
How come there's nothing in that column that?
Cause there's no detail, it's just a total.
So what's in this last column?
Well, that's what I'm getting confused, because if, if that's just the total. But there, the total for the Dunham Bradstreet is two thousand, how come?
Because, because of all those things from Dunham Bradstreet down to presume are all dues and subscriptions.
What's in this last column is what you're requesting, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So we, we did. Alright, so that's, I get that, okay.
That's correct. That's correct.
So the, the, the second last column, unless there's more than one entry, that particular item is gonna be drawn. So if it's three hundred and ten entries or so, that's why they break it out.
That's right.
But. Thirty three hundred just says no, so you don't break it out.
Well, and, and some things can limit themselves to more detail, and you try to be transparent with that, and dues is something you can do that with, because you know. Exactly what you're paying dues for, what the amount is, office supplies can be more of a challenge, you don't always know what your. Office supply needs are gonna be throughout the year, but you have a rough estimate annually. This is the board, the board commissioners.
So the last two columns is. The total, because. Like.
Okay, I see.
But so we would add the. Okay, because so.
No.
Where's the, the middle, so next to last column.
Tells us what department it is.
It's already, you just broke it down.
So the next one. For our own. Is.
This fifteen thousand six dollars you're sending?
Right.
All that is adding up.
You've got a chain.
That's right.
Like you had groups in certain groups and then you.
Well, this is, this is the correct for the public, so this is, this is more information.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I like this, I understand how it goes. And then we're getting here with the projected revenues next. But this will give us an overall view.
Yes.
Of what the total potential expenses are.
Correct.
All.
It's a, it's a rough cut, I mean, I'll tell you that, it's.
The rough cut is better than the rough cut.
So, I mean, expect chances, but it's, but it's something to start referring to.
It's something to start.
So it's a daily block. That, that it hasn't, we, we pulled out utilities and public works. But.
That's true, too, because those are gonna be affected by the murder, yeah, I understand that. Are those the only two pulled out, correct? There's two departments.
Parks and Rec and Airport are not in there either, we, we had a lot of issues trying to put that together today.
Parks and Rec.
It raised more questions than. It's not in there. The airport.
Um. L P A is in here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
You guys in Plaid Angeles, so.
Yes, it should be.
Okay.
We're waiting for night. Sorry, on page one.
I, I think, I think we're really looking at, this is, look at this ten five.
Yes.
Well, we're losing ten five.
Yeah, well, no, I displayed just four parts.
Oh, four, no, I mean, yeah, but that's, that's small.
This is, this is what we had time to get through.
Yeah, that's small. So what, L P A is not? So L P A is not, so this is just ten five? Or I should say most of the ten.
Most of the ten five.
Because of Park and Rank and Airport, or in part of Public Works would be ten.
Yes, and, and, and Power Bill is your twenty five, so that wouldn't be there either.
Yeah, yeah. Power Bill's gonna be revenue usually, then, I mean, we have expenses, but.
You did thousands. You spend your power bill revenue as a separate fund. It's not a lot of money, that's, that's an easy one to do, but. Power was important to prioritize the, the departments. Uh.
Steve and Jack, they're still the first one in the package.
I think if we want to skip the Jack, that's fine.
Yes.
Page ten.
In the bottom.
Yeah, that's wrong, but I.
That's right, as well, I guess, like I said, it's an oil charter account, so the, the. I would, some parks are not, have a lot of questions, they're mostly carryovers from the previous year, and then, and. Mostly the same, so I guess the best thing is just see if there are any questions about them, and then move on. So are there any questions about the board commissioners page?
Well, I mean, there's no looking at, but.
And, and if the board feels better be able to just take it home and just review it, understanding that.
Well, I think, yeah, just one person been here, speaking for himself. We keep bringing these department heads in here later, and we keep bringing them back saying, we don't get a chance to speak, so. It's something we gotta give them a chance, we gotta keep bringing them back, and so, maybe we just take the notes and.
Okay.
And then we, we gotta go back and talk about it later, but. The same face has been here multiple times, and.
Yeah.
They said nothing yet.
I'll, I'll just hit a couple highlights and we'll get into some departments then.
Okay.
So, I guess, page, page two, uh, which is ten four five. So this is the, the leadership or, or now manager's department, so this. Uh, this includes myself, the budget manager, the clerk. Um, we also be proposing a, a new position of a communication specialist, which we talked about last year. And then we also are proposing the existing admin support specialist position that's servicing public works. When the Sanford merger takes place, I'd like to use that position. Pulled into the four or five department to be essentially a, a, a call center for the talent, to help address some of the issues that we have with.
So what's the difference between communication specialist and admin support specialist then?
So I think admin support specialist would be, would be a lower level position that's mostly working as your call center, your help desk. Um, and that's, that's a primary focus of that job. Uh, and other miscellaneous tasks, time and angles, the communication specialist, I think, is your person that's working helping with your social media, and possibly some press releases. Um, your website, uh, if we have some type of event, we wanna help market and advertise, this is the person whose job is.
Do we have a role model person?
No, we don't. I T is contracted with B C three. So all we have is an employee who's just designated to be the liaison.
So. Looking at this and let me break it down.
Yes, sir.
So we have one, two, three, four, five. Positions listed in this first line.
Yes.
And if we go to the fourth line, you're telling me that the upcoming year. The totality for all five positions is two oh nine? Six hundred.
Uh.
Uh, no, we, we.
It's fifty percent of the salaries because the other fifty percent of his charge to the water.
The third fund, that's actually four hundred.
But, but the portion for the general fund is the two oh nine.
Oh, okay.
But we wanna have to account for that shock ball.
And, and we will.
So why not include it where it's visible, I mean, it, we don't, we can't rely on that anymore, so it should be. Even though she just, what you say is four and one.
It's really about, it's about four million. Almost four twenty, really, because it's two oh nine nine, it's, it's basically four twenty.
What, twenty thousand dollars?
And salaries for the.
I, I mean, that's just, I mean, that's a simple thing to change, the board wants to have. Split salaries for the future work sessions presented all in the general fund, we can do that.
I think that we're moving forward since we're losing the enterprise fund. Perhaps we need two columns on anything that would be affected, what it. Was before and what we're looking at moving forward, because the mayor's right, we gotta, we gotta have a budget for that change. So, you know, I, I think, I think we need both figures.
That's, that's, that's somewhat of.
Jim, is the agenda software one time cost, there's this annual.
What are you looking at?
Sorry, skipping down, we had talked about the agenda software to make this a lot easier for her.
There's a, that. Jumped it in the budget.
It, it's, we put this, ten and ten for the agenda software and twenty for the website, that's, that's the, other than the salaries, that's really the biggest change to that department.
So that, the forty, forty five hundred line item.
Like Hank and I had talked yesterday, the agenda software along with the, um, correct me if I'm wrong, Hank. The agenda software as well as the new website, we have a, a, you know, a pretty big upfront cost, and then there's a cost, an annual cost, but. He did include both of those in there, but the annual cost, you remember off the top of your head, Hank?
Yeah, I, I, I think the agenda software annual is about half, like four, like five. The, the website is like fifteen annual after the first year, something like that. And that's, that's close to Civic Plus, we've looked at several, but I think.
Civic.
That's, that's gonna be your, your best for your money.
It, it offers so many different things, but.
So five annually for the agenda software, sorry.
Yeah, four to five, but the, um, the new website platform would also allow, um. Uh, S M S texting, text messages, some, the customers, um, could sign up for that. And then when there's an alert, like trash pickups are delayed, or, um, something like natural, is that something, then it could be.
It'll lead you to more integration with some other software, we use Civic Plus, or the Civic Direct platform for Parks and Rec, for people to sign up for programs. And maybe familiar with Munich Code, or all our orders are, are exported and processed, that also is a, that, that was bought by Civic Plus.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
On this third column. Are there any, are there? Any of these line items that need to be increased due to? All sorts of four one K that need to be increased? What kind?
Oh, I see what you're saying, yes, the, the, the personnel, those lines, yes, they.
Those lines have to be doubled.
The, um. Longevity, FICA, four one K and retirement.
But not taxable benefits, that's not.
Those are, those are cell phones, so. Yes, sir.
Did you say retirement, too?
Yes.
With the website, hey, can we emphasizing, um, like, uh, and like we discussed something to incorporate services? To, um, to increase efficiency in public works department with leaf pickup, particularly leave the pick, pickup and whole pickup.
What do you mean by services, so?
We really need to make sure that the website, if we're gonna pay that kind of money, we need explicitly say, hey, we want this feature where people go on the website and put that I need bulk pickup and low leaf pickup.
So you, you're talking about putting in service requests?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that, we've got to do that, it's twenty twenty four, we discussed this, this will really help improve, I think, the efficiency of the public works department.
Save a lot of money and fuel, too.
Striction, public works?
Sir?
Are you, are you, are you still in striction?
Yes, no, specifically talking about the website cost, I just wanna make sure, twenty thousand upfront. Let's see if that can include something interactive, so then can help them request services.
I got you.
Interactive calendar or something, and then public works can look at that, they can do their schedule, I think they'll be able to work a lot more efficiently. Rather than just going around looking for, frankly, things to do. You know, they, they can really break their schedule, I think, more efficiently, so.
Hank and I were looking at several different, they provided us with several interactive, um, public, you can click and go. And, um, one name was reported by, we found that a lot. And the interactive calendars, like you said, and it was just so, so much there. Pretty, so pretty exciting. We're actually, later on, come to the voting sessions, we're gonna bring those in and show y'all some of the same.
I'm not saying they don't do a good job, they do it awesome, but I just think that, you know, I think their jobs can be chief, it can be done, either is better, that's all in some sense.
Yeah, you, you give us an idea of how that, that is more efficient, now I understand what I was, Commissioner Hauser is saying. But we have an aging population that will never touch that, so. Uh, how can you, the efficiency of that for the money that we spend on it has to be considered?
So, so we have, um, a, a lot of things that we have to. Like the agenda software, for instance, and I know you're talking about the, the elderly, the older people that don't use. Um, so we can, we can still do certain things for them, put alerts out, and the S M S. Text messaging, some, some people don't have cell phones, but it also has another feature where it can call their home phones as well. Um, so it's not just, yes, like, so it's a voice system as well, so there's a lot, and we're just, Hank and I have just scratched the surface on. The things that's a Civic Plus offers, and, and what we've found so far is that we need all this for communication. Um, how it integrates with the, um, agenda software, um. We can build our agendas, the directors can, they'll all have a login, each of you will have a login as well. So when you get your agenda, if you want to, you can type directly to the agenda and pull it up on your screen, and you already have your notes. And then if you still want a printed one, we can do that, too, but, um, that's another cool feature, um. Just really getting more information out there to the public and helping, and, um. Hank, would it be handicap accessible in any way, like the voice, that's something we haven't dug into, you know?
Well, it, it's, it's required to be, it's an A D A requirement, it has to be.
Okay, so that, um, just a lot of different. Um, and, and what I like the most about Civic Plus was it puts all the information there on the front page of the website, so when you go to it. Um, the calendar, everything's right there, because you know, a lot of people, like the website we have now, you have to kind of dig. Dig and pull, and that's, and we don't have any, I mean, that's just all it will do. Um, I ran into a situation where, um, my minutes section is basically full. So I had to go and edit my twenty three minutes and add twenty three, twenty four, just so I could put my twenty four minutes on the platform we're using now. So, so I don't know if that answers your question.
It does.
Um, but.
You have to start from blank every time, like you can't, this agenda has a template software allowing you to.
And then also, another thing that our current website does not allow, so when I go to log in and I upload a new agenda, I can't leave the old agendas up. They have to come down, and so if someone wants to look for an old agenda, they have to email me or call me so they can get a copy of it, because agendas are permanent, permanent record. We have to keep them forever. And, uh, so with the new agenda software and the website, when those agendas are posted, they stay. So someone can go back through and pull up past records.
But they're in the agenda package, right, on, on the website, like you can click on the.
You can on the current one, so right now, tonight's agenda packet is on the website, but when I go. To, um, notice the eighteenth, that one comes down and the eighteenth goes up. There's really nowhere, and the back front website doesn't have any more, really more written, so.
Well, and, and to address your point, Mayor, we're, we're trying to meet our, our residents where they are. Your older audience is gonna like, I heard you say, they're a big phone, make fun of you. The younger audience is gonna wanna do everything from, I even figured they wanna do it from their cell phone, so the website's also mobile friendly. To, to make that, that aspect functional, so we're, we're trying to find a balance to address all these communication challenges to say, we're improving the website. We've got a communication specialist to do our internal communications, the admin support specialist can help with our internal communications. And we think the combination, not just one piece, but the combination of all these things, is gonna really raise our. Our, our profile in that area, hopefully alleviate some concern.
It's helped the admin office, either the website, it's, um, it's a town hall. And also connect cars as well, and, um, so it's, that's what's, that's what's pretty exciting about it.
Another challenge, our website's gotten pretty dated, and, and one of the things you're paying for in the website is the backend, that the, you can't, we can't see, but. That's essentially how we use our friendly.
Yeah.
The components are to make improvements to the site, uh, one of the things that the vendors that we're talking with, including their price, is a refreshed website. So, so it helps avoid some of the problem where it, what you have gets stale, when it gets stale, people start. It's just not, it's just saying it's outdated, so that's, we're also planning for the future to make sure what we're doing is sustainable. That, that really were the main things addressed in, in the four or five budget, so if there were any other questions or concerns, I'll move on to.
I, I have two questions, that's a big, the, the wedding conference and summer conference in parentheses two, is that a two day event?
That's.
Um, what does that mean?
Two. I'm sorry, two individuals.
Two individuals for how many days?
Uh, normally two or three.
Two or three.
Two or three days, yes.
So in the event that it would be two days, that's eight hundred dollars approximately for, for each of you to pay for hotel, gas and food, is that correct? Be your main expenses?
Yes.
I just feel like that number is high.
I mean, that's, I mean, and that's where the conferences are, and the audience is continuing education hours for.
I understand that, but that's a lot of money.
Is there a fee for those conferences in addition to the lodging and food?
Yeah, yes.
How much is the fee?
I, I don't know. Well, that's a couple hundred dollars, going with the registration.
Couple hundred dollars, so it'll leave you the remainder of seven hundred dollars each, right, or six hundred, if it was two hundred dollars per person? Per day. It's a lot of money.
I mean, even when we have classes for our, anyways, you're talking three or four hundred dollars a day, classes, I mean, this is, this is down wide.
Are these over like in, in, uh, the west side of the state? You guys have to travel?
They're, well, they're always gonna be places you travel, I mean.
Uh, my, I mean, are they, are they charing at the same hotel?
In, uh, like this year, the summer clerks conference is gonna be in Charlotte. Last year it was in Wilmington. And, uh, and it's pretty much, it's, you're in class from eight AM to seven, eight. Maybe there are some perks, I mean, um, they want you to be social and stuff, but you're there to get your hours, you're there to get your continuing that hour and, uh.
I mean, and in defense of that, if, as I've done this for many years with, in double ACP, uh, you get, it, it is well worth the money because of what you're taught, if you actually engage.
Right.
So I, I, I really don't.
I'm not advocating it doesn't go, I just didn't know the, the, it sounded a little lavish in my opinion. I just wanna make sure you weren't eating phoey and lobster, that's all.
I mean, and typically another thing they do is they, they give, uh, the conferences so many rooms, and so they'll give, the towns and stuff, it's kind of a blockout range.
We have, well, honestly, we just follow the, the GSAs outline on meals and things, so.
Okay.
No, no, you can't buy lobster and get.
It was just a, it was a bad joke. I just wanna make sure, you know, we, we, we talk about, the mayor's introduced this a lot, where we're like, oh, it's in the budget type thing, where we have a lot of fat here. If we don't trim it, then we have a tendency or an incentive rather to spend money that has been appropriated. We need to really, we need to discuss how we want monies that aren't spent to make sure they're not spent on something else simply because they're appropriated. I think we need to discuss that at a later time, but I just wanted to bring that up. Before, before.
Are you all ready to move on to Asia?
Yep.
So it's, this restart, I'll thank you for.
So, Hank, I'm taking that, um, the same items, the same stake, a four one K retirement, the whole agenda all doubled?
Yes.
You, you had that break out.
Nancy has a, a sheet that actually lists the positions that, that, that applies to.
Yeah, I can kind of feel it because, I mean. Yeah, you, you, Amy is, we know that, that department pays more, so it's gonna be that. But, um, I like when you get your top three priorities listed here at the bottom.
That was, that was requested by Ms. Bray.
Yeah.
So I've asked all the departments to try and incorporate their top three priorities as requested, and also make an effort in their requests to link their requests to the strategic.
What do you think the cost of those three priorities might be?
Okay, so they're in here, if you look halfway, almost halfway down, page four, we've added safety program back in.
Is that under the notes?
Um.
Or, or, why not in description?
The last, line item total. So when I first got here, I had, I had the safety program written in, and then it migrated to public works and now with how. How, not being here, it's migrating back to me. And the plan is to incorporate someone from each department. So we get input across the agency, which is tied back to the strategic plan about employee engagement, and getting their input and valuing their opinions, those types of things.
So, so that could have been the safety program. What, uh, just what is it, what is it used for? Cause I was trying to find it while you were talking. It's, it's, it's fifteen hundred dollars?
Right, so it would start off by reestablishing the safety committee.
I mean, is it, is it, uh, it was a programs, is it software?
No, it, it's a program that the employees would engage in and carry out, which means, um, we, yes, a safety committee, so it may mean getting new SDS books, or it may mean getting new, um, post aid stations, or it may include updating those things, um, and it'll, it's gonna get input and buy-in from the employees to look after their own areas, uh, according to OSHA.
So we're gonna improve stuff like, um, uh, exit protocols and emergency, where, how, how to access, um, um, I think it's called AED, and how to do that, I mean, is that part of safety?
That would be, we're doing that, except right now, and that's one thing we would look at is the AEDs, because we don't have them in our, our buildings. So, uh, they'll determine the need for that, the liability of that, of having it, not having it. The, uh, those are just some of the points of things that we would talk about.
How much is the cost for the safety program?
Well, with it just starting in months, we don't really know how much it will be. We know that we, in the past, back when I was in charge of it before, that we had printed materials, that we had, um, things that we put out into each building, we had the SDS books replaced. We had, um, the safety stations.
You're extrapolating from an old figure.
Yes.
It, it's an opportunity to give some of your lower level employees input as well. And it, it, that's something we're trying to find more opportunities to do that.
What the, uh, employment evaluation program?
Yes, so that's in the infancy stage of our mind of what we're gonna do with that, but, um. It is, it is, um, thirty-three, thirty-three oh three, yes, it's under hospitality, employee engagement. Um, you'll see that last year there was six thousand, this year there's nine thousand. So that's why I requested, because, um.
So you, you, you're still probably talking about something with a computer. You recognize somebody for doing something good.
Right, be a, a very structured program to recognize you as a service, which we do with certificates at Christmas. But I think what we need to do is pull that out of the Christmas festivities, and do like an import, employee appreciation event, where each department head gets to recognize all their individuals that have got, like at the water plant, wastewater plant, which I know they're moving, this is just an example. If you have somebody goes from certification, um, C to B or B to A, um, any kind of acknowledgements, trainings, things they've got certifications for in the public works department, the individuals that, um, take advantage of this, um, career ladder, that we're talking, that we've talked about, where they get it increases, if they, um, complete all those activities, those kind of things. Um, and so it would be a time for everybody to come together, and have an event like that, so people can be recognized for years of service, but also their accomplishments during the year. Um, and when I was with Red Oak Community College, we had a very, um, structured program that at five years, this is, they were very big on pottery, okay? So they had one type of piece of pottery at five years, another type at ten, another fifteen, twenty, twenty-five and thirty. So some kind of program where they know, well, if I need five years of service, this is what I'm getting. Or if I need thirty years and I'm gonna retire, then this is what I'm gonna get. So it would, the cost may vary from year to year. I've already calculated who would be getting five-year awards this year, ten and twenty. So I think we have six at five years, um, let's say October, and we have two at ten and one at twenty. So, but they made those increments, and that's included in that line item. And the last item is nothing, um, fancy or glorious, but it's a file cabinet, and it's a fire, king, fireproof cabinet for records that we are supposed to be, um, keeping under lock and key in case there's, uh, destruction of the building, that, um, these personnel records, the retention on personnel records are, uh, thirty years past the death of the employee.
So that's seven thousand, seven thousand for that file cabinet?
Yes.
So you're trying to request anything? Your, your previous, previous items can be one of them.
Yes, sir.
Um, what, what's the, um, your contract and services for NeoGo at sixty-five, what is?
Okay. It, this, NeoGo is our applicant tracking system.
That's, that's software.
That is software. So the annual cost is around the ten thousand dollars. The two items on either side, the seventy thousand two hundred, um, and the sixty-five one hundred is actually, I cut that line item as a whole from seventy thousand two hundred down to sixty-five ten.
But it's, uh, you said the software itself, is, is the subscription is only ten?
It's ten a year.
So how is it, if the subscription for the software is ten, how does it go, what causes it to go to sixty-five? What, what causes the fifty?
If you go back to the previous page back where contract and services started, back, um, on ten four eight forty-five hundred with Centurion professionals, and you go over to the second to the last column, or let's.
Yeah, eighteen.
Right, you, you, that together, then, um.
Add which ones together?
All contracted services.
Yeah, all, everything from Centurion all the way down through NeoGo is contracted services. And this year, it was seventy thousand two hundred that was budgeted.
Okay, I thought you were just saying for that one software. Yeah, yeah, I see it now, okay. All right.
So this is what you have budgeted for, like these are fixed costs here, so you might not necessarily spend all those monies. Depending on how many polygraphs you administer that are paid for or drug tests, so on.
Right, and, and here's the thing with these, these are not fixed, because it, like you said, it will depend on, um, how many polygraphs we have to administer, how many people that we have to send for pre-employment drug test, um, how many people go to have their hepatitis C vaccines. All of those things are, will either lower it or increase it. So when we've had all these, uh, shortages at the police department, that money goes away very, very quickly. So, um.
Each applicant has to be polygraphed, right?
Polygraph, background check.
Psychological.
And that's regardless of where they get the position or not, right?
Right. So any applicant we decide to move forward, then it's gonna, it's gonna cause.
Our churchroom inside these costs go up.
Right, and you're based on what we spent last year.
When we get into the police project, another issue is every time somebody leaves, we got this cost for every single applicant for that job, so that's why training and retention is so important. Cause this, this is a per person cost, even if you're not hired. If you're hired, you got outfit and a trainer.
Which goes, his budget is so high. This year, we hear it was a month.
But still, you're talking about a total outlay for the entire town operation, one affects the other.
Absolutely.
How many people use that EAP?
Um, I get a report every year, and, um, since I've been here and it's been in effect the whole time, um, no one.
What, what'd you say?
Employee assistance program down at the bar.
I don't get who personally or, or anything like that, I just get what the usage is per year. And it's, a thousand dollars is, last year I got it lower to that. Um, the previous year it was like three thousand and something, and so it lowered to a thousand, but it's not a program that you can eliminate because it's.
Right.
Then, you know, it's not helped.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out why it's so low.
It wasn't, and it used to be.
Is it pushed, is it recommended?
We, we cover it with every employee upon hire. This year in our benefits guide, we're going to put something about it in there, so it's pushed even more. And we'll have a, um, employee portal this year, um, so they can go on and they can have that information at the fingertips.
Who, who is your company?
Um. McLaughlin.
McLaughlin, okay. So they give, I know they give lectures and parts and things like that, and one of the things, cause we use them too. And, um, one of the things that we do is we make sure that our department, our principals, uh, give that information out, even if it's, if it's somebody who has, who's having some issues and they don't wanna talk to anybody or whatever, you know, it's just something that they can give to try to push the usage.
Our department heads are, they don't give anything out because we give it out, and we can send it out periodically during the year. But our department heads are good about when they have employees that are having issues. Um, I know for sure there have been some that have recommended, you know, calling EAP or contacting human resources, you know, if they didn't know how to go about it on their own, if they didn't have the information. But to date, no one has ever called and used it.
Do they, do you all use any of their psychological services for, if there is somebody who you have some concerns about? Cause I know they have that piece in there too.
Um, we, at one point in time, we just, we almost did a supervisor referral, but it, employment wise, sort of itself out. We didn't have to go down that path, but we were headed there.
And, and the other thing, even though you were, uh, were passing, giving them information on psychological services, do you all tell them about the, other services that they offer?
Yes, ma'am.
Legal surf, okay.
We do. Any other questions?
The twelve hundred dollar line increase for employment law conference? Well, sir, am I reading that right? You've increased twenty-five to thirty-nine hundred this year?
No, that's another, um, accumulation. So you add, last year, um, for travel and training, thirty-five hundred dollars was requested, and this year it's, um.
Oh, I see.
Up to thirty-nine hundred.
I see. And then your, your total funds, uh, at the bottom right, is that fifty percent out of the ten fund? To the other fifty percent will be out of the thirty?
No, in all the funds, the only thing that's at fifty percent is actual salaries related.
That'd be the very first one.
It would, actually, it would change that total.
Right.
By the fifty percent. I, I see what you're asking now.
It's a hundred and sixty thousand, and then you would add the remaining eighty to your full budget of two hundred and ninety thousand dollars approximately, from both funds.
There's fifty percent as well.
But.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Do what you're saying, yes.
And to, to eighty, two eighty?
Yeah, no, you would add the, the other eighty thousand.
But you also have to add the, the benefits and all that.
So that's, that's a pretty.
Any other questions? Thank you, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
That is, it is eight forty-five. I don't know about anybody else, but I've been here and out here for a while. What is the pleasure? You want to continue, um, or do you want to go home?
There, I did, I did wanna make a note about page one concerning the Merrill salary of ten thousand seven hundred ninety-four dollars.
Yes.
How, how are we ensuring, Hank, that those funds are going exclusively toward parks? The Parks and Rec Department, rather than just going to that, that fund to be spent in that department?
Don't anybody except for the people I thought that actually really were our HR and anchor. I took my salary and donated it to Parks and Rec. And so basically, uh and the reason it be, and we have a lot of kids that cannot participate. In these uh affairs. You ask me how is it accountable, well, hey, I'm trusting them that if a child comes to them. And they don't have the registration fee, they'll take care of it. Also, if a child comes to me, you or anybody on this list, since everybody knows or in the audience. For that year, you go and you can get registered. Now, once the, when the money's not there, they have to show where it's spent at. I mean, it's just a matter of trust of people. I'm not trying to, I'm not following the money. I made a request and so I might as well make that apparent. We have uh Soli City Football Association. I talked with uh Joey, I've talked with the town manager. We will no longer be doing as a tunnel recreational tackle football. So we do have something called the Soli City Football Association. They are putting their uh stuff together as we speak. And I did make a request that a donation be made to them out of that fund.
Are they worried about injuries with the tackling?
We talked to players here. We talked about soccer and this new thing, waffle ball, not waffle ball. Access to all of this electronics and it's just hard to. Stay competitive. What happens is. Let's go to Pittsburgh. Pittsburgh will stack a team. And our kids are playing on the basis of everybody gets to play. They play their best. So when we go down, they drag our kids up down the field. And so it 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 just wasn't a good look and and some alternative. With some guys got together and they're trying to put this together. And it's no fault of anybody's fault, it's it just. It's just where we are.
Well, yeah, that's a good point. And and thank you for bringing to our kids your sound.
Well, what we have, we 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 got a draft Monday, I believe, of a of an MOU.
Yeah. Outstanding, yeah.
Yeah, I think there's some things that we need to pull out of work, we would talk about. That's something the board wants to entertain.
Yeah.
Well, after long getting tired, so.
Before, we would, we better make a motion. I just, I just, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, but um I had a. Uh community member come up to me earlier this week. Um and asked me about, uh well, I actually complimented the work that had been done. Uh to along the sidewalks on Chatham Avenue. Uh so I just wanted to shout out.
Nice.
Street maintenance crew, I think it was, uh on the on the good work that had been done and um. And none of it is recognized, it doesn't go on notes. Good job, street maintenance crew.
A lot of people saw it, so that's good, good PR.
So um. Now, obviously, we didn't get through all this, so I guess we need to schedule another. Uh meeting, um Chris, I don't wanna take Chris as a good idea, but. Some of our department heads drive a bit to be here, so maybe instead of them showing up every night. Maybe we just have a select few and. Because we got all these people coming every night and getting through a little bit of. Maybe we just focus on a few of the times, give these folks a break.
That's that's the pleasure of the board, we'll just try and structure.
Whenever, so they they don't have to see us again, they don't have to look at our our smiling faces. You know, because it's rough sitting out there, I'm sure, because it's rough sitting up here.
And I know we took revenues off, some don't really know what was into it, but I do have a point asked. Uh a few weeks back, you mentioned that we got in third man from Wolf Speed.
Three quarter.
Three quarter, I'm sorry, three quarter. So I'd really like to to us maybe. Take about five of that and not allocate it, not budget it. Put it in a rainy day fund um of some type. And try to proceed on the budget as if it didn't exist. And then if we need it, we can dip into it later, but I. I don't know how many more times we're gonna get big hits like that. I wanna be. Be mindful of that money and and uh. Kind of conservative with it.
Well, I mean, that just that just requires the board just to not have to do anything. Um because it wasn't, it wasn't budgeted, so.
You're saying five hundred thousand two, when it was there, payback.
No, that's a different issue.
But it's still money coming back to us, right?
And so so Wolf Speed paid at the very beginning of this fiscal year, I permit fee money. Mount Air, that's in the current year, and that was one time. Mount Air started next budget year, it's gonna have their tax incentive last. So the incentive money, you're gonna get back annually from them.
Which is how much?
Which is, it's it's still plus eighty-two B, so I don't, don't hold me to this number, but it's. Seven hundred thousand somewhere.
We could we could be like two, maybe five, like have a special account, that's just the annual kind of stuff, stuff fund.
I think, I think. I think with the Mount Air money, the the. That's, I s- yes. Okay, the my my, well. Yeah, the 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 Mount Air money, because that's recurring. I think that's gonna be, a lot of that's gonna be absorbed when you're moving in quarters from thirty then to ten. Okay. Yeah, I think.
I'm talking about the the budget from Wolf Speed.
Right. From Wolf Speed, it's whatever we choose to do with it. Just keep in mind it's a one-time revenue.
Right, that's why I wanna kind of put it as some slash savings fund. I'd like to, I don't know how many more things about it, I don't have to be very particular about that.
All right. Anything else?
Thanks for the subs.
Again, thanks for dinner. Guys, we will uh keep you like this again, uh we will let you know who's coming. So you can get out of here. All we, what actually happened, the last meeting, we were all together, we talked about the revenue cut on. The uh water bill, how to make that work, and now we find out there's some things we cannot do in that realm. So we need to do what we did before it is.
Actually, I think we need to explain what you found to the rest of the board, you know. But I don't know if the rest of the board is aware of what you found out after that meeting. Oh, does this special call?
Well, there is, everyone's, from my understanding of law, I dealt with this in another town very recently. If everyone, every member of the board is here, obviously, that you can add.
We didn't notice.
Any, any, you can't add any alter new business to an agenda that's already set. Because you could, the public could think you were eluding them.
But could, because this is a special call, I think the the notice is different than a general.
You can't.
Typically walked into what's on the agenda, but there was a provision, if I, I can't remember the statute number. But I could probably find it, it give me a few minutes, but. If everyone. Oh, because the notice of special media has to go to you all too, but if everyone is here. Then you can add something to a special, but that, I didn't know that was up until recently, but.
Grab my book right quick, if it'd make everybody, it'd make me feel better.
But it it may be a statute that that's not in the book, it's so.
It's in the book.
Well, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
You know, it may be something that he.
And I also in that town had all the board members sign a document that waives objecting to something being added if they're not there. So and it's a standing waiver.
But that's on the special card. Go and body comment, and that's mine, we'll use someone there next time.
You can't take action.
Yeah.
Manage your comment.
But you can take action on it.
We can discuss but not act.
Well, because it was. I think the board needs to reinforce, maybe we're gonna make that discussion with the adjournment.
Yeah, I it's, yeah, I s- I think it's probably safer for the board not taking the action, but and I I think we got time to resolve it. But we we found after we made a motion approved at the last board meeting about changing the bulk water rates. We only have two accounts that really are on bulk water, and they're both with Chatham County. And there is a contract that the town is party to with Chatham County that locks in what that raise is. So we don't have the ability to change the rate.
And most of the, how we were gonna tell it was a money, it's something was the increase in the cost rate. Yeah, so we we just gonna undo all the funds. We're gonna have to.
We don't have a choice until we come up with another idea, which we do have, and do you have that paperwork?
It's in my office.
When you can send it to our attorney, and we can, because there are some options they came out of knocking, still the government. And most of those are so.
And we didn't, we don't have a few folks reporting that their rates and drive economy.
And also I checked with the LGC and MTP, they were both, they were both fine with it, they didn't recommend doing it, but. It was not, hey, you can't do this.
Well, but and that's great news, that great.
Yeah.
Administration agencies were not opposed to, and maybe neutral, but. If we can't do it because of an agreement with China, then we're still, you know. You know, our officials checking. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, schedule another meeting?
I'm sorry. Unless we need to.
Yeah.
We can wait and schedule it later.
I can take off a day or two in April if need be, uh not working any weekends in April. I know that's three more weeks out, but this this month, this month is gonna be really hard for me.
Wow.
For any additional days.
Early as you can get here, six.
No, he's at six P M. What what day, what day are you thinking there?
For a next budget workshop.
I would say in this coming Saturday.
This coming Saturday. Travis and yourself, and we have a. The following Saturday, I I'm committed, but I could work something out during the week possibly. Um just get here earlier. Um, yeah, Monday through Monday through Friday, I could I could make something work, I have to shift my schedule around at work, but.
Mondays are regular board meetings, the eighteenth. And next week, we don't have any meetings. Would y'all, Hank, are you ready for the staff to come back next week? And anybody's got anything?
If it's at the end, towards the end of the week, it might be better.
I'd be locked on Thursday just so we can get them out.
How about Friday, I'm not committed actually, with Friday, the fifteenth works later, or the later end of the week?
Is everybody, can they do the fourteenth at six P M and bring two back now?
When it's Thursday.
Thursday's the fourteenth, oh, then we have the, Hank, have.
Mr. Merrick, can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
If you guys go through all our stuff, and you don't have major questions for us. Is there a reason for us to come back, other than if you have questions on anything on budget?
Hey, I like that.
That's a great.
Don't talk to each one of you or like it, but unless there's a major question, I think our stuff is pretty much straightforward.
Sounds good, we'll read through it, we'll, if we have any questions, we'll get back with them now. And I I my manager may be able to answer the question then.
And when you have revenues ready, if you'll communicate in a group text, you may move forward, we can revisit that portion of the agenda that we skipped, right?
So y'all just wanna hold off scheduling the next meeting?
Yeah, until you get up, because we can read this and then you can text us about revenue portion.
You're 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 pretty far ahead of the game on budget, it may not seem like it.
Guess it's the eighteenth, the the first time we can revisit the warning motion?
Yes. Yeah, I let you call a meeting just to do that.
Please put that on the agenda.
I think this is really what you gave us from the old department, that's kinda like what I was trying to say that we.